It's 7:30, the appointed time. Thursday, September 22nd. This is the constituent planning board meeting. We have an agenda that has been published. Do we have ...
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. We're starting with a mixed-use special permit, 50 countryway. Review and approval of the alternative design for replacement of the Weatherby House. Who's up?
Well, let's, sure, let's take that first.
Let's take the report. You can hear the comments.
I'm assuming we have our representative here for that? Thank you.
I don't know if you've met Wendy Frontiero.
I have not, so I didn't recognize her. Why don't you come on up, Wendy?
Very impressive resume that we reviewed.
Okay. Is this working now?
Yes.
That's just for the TV.
Oh, okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. My name is Wendy Frontiero. I'm an architect and a preservation consultant. I was asked by Laura Harbottle to review the proposed replacement building for the George Weatherby House at Green Bush. And the review is based on the conditions of the planning board from its decision on May 21st, 2015. So the instructions were to, for the new design, to include a facade similar to that of the Weatherby House. And for the preservation consultant's report evaluating the appropriateness of the proposed facade relative to the size, design, character, and historic period of the building it was intended to replace. So I submitted a report, which I, you have and have read. So the three major areas of concern that I had about the replacement building were the massing, the architectural form and articulation, and materials. In terms of massing, the building is a pretty traditional New England composition with a front house additions and an attached barn. Traditionally, however, the front building is, reads as a separate and preeminent structure in the group. And my concern about the proposed replacement building is that the addition, the extension that's immediately adjacent to it continues the south wall, it's not set back. The north wall is set back, but the south is not. And it runs on for another, the existing building is about 28 feet wide, 26. The extent, first extension runs on for another 100 feet. So that, and then the porch is also extended along that entire 100-foot length of the first extension. So that the front building, it, so the addition is not subsidiary to the, the extension is not subsidiary to the front structure, which is part of the historic character of that, of the existing complex. Secondly, the second category was architectural form and articulation. The roof of the replacement structure appears, is steeper slope and taller height than the existing building, the Greek Revival period of which the Weatherby House is a part traditionally had a fairly low pitched roof. The replacement structure appears significantly higher, with a higher foundation than the, in the historic building. The dormers on the roof are significantly bigger scale than a building of the 19th century would have had. And the roof of the wraparound porch is flat on the existing building and is pitched on the replacement building. Also, the windows on the, on the existing building appear to be much taller on the first floor than the second floor in comparison to the replacement building. Lastly, was the issue of trim, the wall trim and the window and door trim. The drawings for the proposed building show that trim generally similar to the existing building, but there's not enough information presented to do a really well-informed comparison. Several other details were incongruent between the existing building and the historic, and the replacement building. And I mentioned a few of those in the report, the clavate exposure and the sill height. And the third area of concern was the lack of historic materials. The existing building has natural materials in the form of granite for the foundation and wood for the siding and the trim. And the new building has no natural materials. Concrete foundation, cement fiber, fiber cement, clavates and trim, aluminum clad windows So overall, well, a lot of things, you paid me to be picky, so I tried to give you the full, a full range of details to consider. But in historic preservation, the, God is in the details and they make a difference altogether when they're layered up to get proportions, to get materials and textures right, to get scale right. And it makes the difference between authenticity and, and artificiality. So my, my final conclusion was that based on the preponderance, preponderance of incongruent features and the lack of some of information on the design details, that the replacement building appears inappropriate to the character of the historic building. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
The question, I was just, when I read through the report, it was a very thorough report, was the fact of the massing, that was the first issue you talked about. But the way I was looking at it was theoretically, if the building was able to be, the current structure was able to be used, and it was still going to be brought forward to the street and used as the retail component, but the massing would basically be identical to what they're proposing. And that, so that's what I wasn't sure about. I know you commented on some of the massing with the different buildings. But we actually did approve that massing for the existing structure. Is that correct? Or I should say, did that factor into your decision at all? Or just, or I should say, not your decision, did that factor into some of the comments that you made?
Well, if, if you were looking at the massing only of the main building on its own, not in relation to any of the additions on it, then the, the dimensions of the replacement building are similar in the footprint and the, in the length and width of the building, but the height is different because of the roof.
Right. Okay.
And in terms of, in the relationship between the front house and the rear, any rear extensions, on a historic building typically they're set back, they're not in the same plane. So if you kept the same massing, the same footprint of building A in totality, it would help the front building to read as separate if the porch did not extend down past the front structure. So that the porch would help define what is the main house.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of where I was going to with the question is that, given that we have a certain set of criteria we sort of already laid out, you know, it's sort of like, is there a way to take what is proposed and modified so we get much closer to the, sort of, the historic look and feel, feel without, I think Richard's probably correct, that, you know, if they were to bring the old building forward and attach, you know, the rest of the new building to it, it would have the same mass in that regard. So I guess the question is, you know, what are the, what are the sort of recommended changes that might get it to a place where it's much closer? I don't know that we're ever going to get perfect here, right? But, but that it's much closer to sort of a historic restoration or recreation.
It was a tough charge to the architects to make a new building that looks like an old building without, you know, if you're not going to, if it's not going to be an exact replica, what do you want to achieve? Lowering the roof slope and the height of the roof on the front structure would make a difference. It would make it look Greek Revival and not Victorian or colonial revival. Keeping the porch with a flat roof, the pitched roof that's shown is not a huge pitch, but it's, it's still noticeable. And keeping the porch only around the front part of the structure and not extending it down the middle piece would make a difference. So it doesn't look like...
So it's not a wraparound?
So it's not a wraparound around the whole thing. That would help the front part read as its own.
And I think one of the things that we were struggling with, at least initially, was the dormers, whether they're, and I know in your report, you said that that wasn't typical, but then many times those were added later on, but those were smaller.
Right, but they're, yeah, they're smaller. And I think part of the reason that they're so tall is because there's increased head height in the, in the half-story or the third story now. So to get a certain level of, a certain degree of height there, you want higher, yeah, higher dormers. Also, the windows, it's a, it's a major feature of the historic building that the first floor windows are so much taller, they're two feet taller. And I didn't measure that from, they're not two feet taller on the, on the replacement building, but they are different heights. But it's, it's a degree of difference on the historic building.
I know we also discussed, you know, when it comes to the details, like the coins along the edge, the trim, that that potentially could be saved and then reused?
Yeah.
Was that something that you looked at?
That would be great, because the building is about the same, is about the same length and width and the height for the first two stories. So if that could be reused, that would be fantastic. Those pilasters are astounding. They are so big. And the trim on the windows is fancy for its style. It's not the fanciest that the Greek Revival did, but there's distinctive trim there now with the molded casings on the sides and then a special molding, a higher lintel on the top. And maybe those could be saved, too. Hardyboard, a lot of people go with Hardyboard because it's durable. It looks different and sometimes you have to have different trim details. But at the least, the exposure of the clavate should be the same as in the historic building. And all that keeps it to the scale. The historic building is smaller scale than the size of the buildings that people typically build today. But all of that helps to keep the sense of scale. And even if you don't think about it individually, it's noticeable. It makes a difference. The sill height is about two-thirds, the proposed sills are two-thirds of the existing ones. And if you had that sill, two sills next to each other, it's a big difference. So it's, I would recommend keeping that kind of scale the same. Otherwise, it just looks like an old building on steroids.
Other questions? Or maybe we can hear from...
One more question, I'm sorry, just because actually I know Ann's thinking about it. Is, we were talking about the column, the structure or the fenestration, not the fenestration, what would be the, the column spacing? It's offset right now. Was that historical in sense of, or was that just sort of a weird fluke?
It's unusual, but that's why I suggested in my report, doing some research, that there may be photographs of the building somewhere that show the original spacing.
Okay.
Because that, I assume there was a porch like that originally, because there's a Greek Revival entrance on the side that the porch connects to. But that space, it's unusual that the door would not, front door would not be centered between columns. So I think it may be, be worth looking for some photographs. And I would think that a bill, that building, people might have photographed themselves in front of it, left photographs somewhere, because it's, it's a distinguished Greek Revival building. Given its detailing with the pilasters and the big entablature and special moldings around the windows and the doors, and also the setting that it's so far back from the street where everything else is close by, and that it sits on, on an earth plinth, I figure the, it says something about the status of the owner. So I would think they would also have taken photographs of themselves, so that, that there may be some documentary evidence of the porch. And also of what the style was of the columns, because we know they're replacement columns.
All right, thank you. Great. Anybody else?
No, let's hear the response.
Yeah. Laura, you, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just, you know, could echo what I think I heard Wendy say, which is that you're not going to achieve perfection, but these are just, you know, a whole menu of ideas. And if you put a bunch of things together from that, maybe you wind up with something that's a definite step closer to what you're really looking for.
Great. Why don't we hear from the developers here?
I think the beginning should be that the decision that the planning board made, that we assumed when Peter became the new owner, was crystal clear as to how to treat the existing Weatherby House, either restore it or replicate it. Either of those were allowable, depending on what was deemed the condition of the building. Okay? So the notion that we were going to go backwards from what had been approved was something that we didn't entertain. We didn't start out with a clean sheet of paper and try and redesign the whole thing that had been approved. And it was, like I said, it was really clear, we couldn't change the footprint, we couldn't do it. We did come back with one, one round suggestion, which you folks did approve, and that was based on kind of fine tuning things like the elevator, making those real for kind of the construction of the building. And as you know, we're proposing to build this with modular construction for the speed of construction on this particular site. We're convinced it's a really good way to do it. The quality is the same, the cost is appreciably the same, but the speed of construction is half of what you'd build with sticks. So what we did, let me put this, give them a more good view, I'm sorry, is we've drawn an elevation here of what is, that's what is there now. The windows are the same size, the measures are the same size, first floor, second floor. They haven't been changed from the Weatherby House now.
I'm sorry, did you say they were the same size? So, so they're not the same height on the first floor as the second?
No.
They're taller on the first floor.
Is correct. The first floor windows are taller than the second floor. The only difference of what we're proposing is on the reconstruction. The windows that are in the existing Weatherby House are replacement windows from, who was the builder that does all the, whatever?
Harvey.
Harvey windows. And those go inside of, when they do a replacement window, they diminish the size of the window a bit on, all the way around, because they just slide it in, the existing window. So these would be larger, which we are assuming would be what we'll find when we take those Harvey windows out. Can you see that? So this section shows kind of what we're proposing, which is modular construction from, call it building A modular. And this is the Weatherby House. And because of maintaining the exact height, the exact dimensions of that house, the eve, the columns, the top of the ridge, we're proposing to build this with conventional construction, stick build. We, the last time we were here, we went through a description of how difficult it would be to restore the Weatherby House using what's there to meet the code. Doesn't meet the code. There's a, you know, as we said, this has to be 100 pounds live load because of the new commercial use of the building. It's not a residential use now, it's a mixed-use commercial. So that's 100 pounds square foot, these are 75. The roof framing does not satisfy the code requirements for wind load and snow load. This is based on our, the measured structural report, as well as Mr. O'Day's report. They both agreed.
I think, I don't want to stop your pitch here, but I think we've, we've heard all that. I guess what I'd like to do is address what our consultants come back and say, what can, are we, are we, you know, I'd like to hear your opinion of, of what they've proposed here and whether we can get much closer than what you've gotten so far.
Well, if we wanted to kind of redesign all of building A, we could probably do something different that might, might satisfy some of the criteria that Wendy's proposing. But that's not what we were supposed to do, John. We were supposed to replicate the building exactly, which is what we've done. So I, no, that's kind of a big discussion.
Okay, so, just, just so we're clear then. So you're saying that the pitch is the, the existing pitch is the pitch that you've designed in here?
The same.
The roof pitch?
Yes.
Right?
The roof pitch is the same. You know, this is a frontal, but this is a comparison. These are real dimensions, you know, and they're taken from ground floor. They're the same, eight foot six, 18 six to the bottom of this eve, and then 34 70 to the ridge. This is the section that shows those in true scale in a section, elevation. In perspective, it's different. But it's, this is the same as the Weatherby House since then. And, and I don't know how we start a conversation about going backwards, of not doing that.
Well, I'd like to answer that first question, because I think what I heard was it's not the same. So it seems like we might have a little difference. And I'm looking to...
Wendy?
Wendy, it sounded, sounded like the, I'd just like to get this issue about the roof pitch. Are you saying the roof pitch is, as it's proposed, is not consistent with the existing roof pitch?
The roof pitch in the drawings that I used as a base, which was created in August 24th, it's steep and longer than the existing.
Okay. So we have a sort of a discrepancy there?
I think that if there were, if there were measured drawings of the existing building, then we'd have some documentation that we should compare and be sure of.
Well, I'll tell you right now, it's spot on. We started with the drawings that Paul Ford did, was the drawings that we inherited, which were the existing Weatherby House. And then our measurements of windows, so, and heights verified that. So we have not gone and done a complete set of every, every piece of trim, pilaster, but we replicated it as best we can for this set of drawings to show the intent, which is clearly to match the existing. The columns are different. We pointed that out in our report, that when Chris Ford was here last, the last meeting, he said he got those up loads, and I'm sure he put them in the back of his truck. And they, you know, without too much thought about the L over our cylinder mass ratio of columns and what they look like, so we changed those a bit. The rest is, is kind of what was approved.
So I'm just going to go through what I thought I heard, and, and you can tell me, so it sounds like we don't have an issue with the roof slope. As long as it sort of recreates what we have there, then it's fine, right?
We've got the advantage of reading Wendy's report. So I, first we heard about the comments, it's sitting in the back.
Okay. Well, let's try to take them to the extent you can, and then if there's open items. What about the pitch on the roof of the porch? Is that a flat pitch? I mean, a flat roof?
It's a hip. This is the hip that's there.
Yeah. So...
I'm not sure if it's a flat roof. This is replicating hip roof.
How about the, the wraparound on the porch?
Yeah, that was part of the Ford design, you know, if, I'll show you the plan.
But there's no wraparound on it now.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, there is.
Yep.
You can see it.
I think this is what the wraparound is referring to. On the south elevation, this is the front, this is Weatherby House. Okay? This is the front porch. And then the porch continues on the side, okay, right here. And it goes all the way back to the wing that is projecting out.
Okay.
I'll, there's this plan of it here.
Here.
Show you.
In the normal house, or this is regular house, it would stop here, but he has it going all the way back.
This is...
The existing stops right here.
The existing would stop here, because of the barns right there.
Right.
As we see there.
This is the ground level plan. Okay? This is the front, this is the Weatherby House. So here's the porch that wraps around and goes back. We've connected that into, here's the rear entrance. This is a parking area for the offices and the retail in the ground floor. There's also parking on the side coming in this entrance. So this was a nice connection to make it, the rear entrance, offices, retail.
Right, but that's, that's the new design. Where does the porch stop now?
The porch stops...
It stops at the...
Kind of goes around.
It wraps around to where the staircase is there.
Okay.
The end of the Weatherby House.
It'd be like this.
It's a, it's a two-sided porch right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if, the description that I guess I heard is that we could stop this, we could discontinue the wraparound and just have it at the Weatherby section through here. But it seems as if that, you know, this was an amenity, kind of connecting all the retail windows and the like. And the entrance, here's another entry into the retail space. And here's the, kind of the main rear entrance. So that seemed logical.
Okay.
Admittedly, this is not, this building A is different than the building that's there now, that's being taken down. Of course, it's taking the barn off to a new home. And... Of course, taking the barn off to a new home and, so.
So from the perspective of windows, we are saying we're having taller first floor windows? And will they, will they sort of recreate the sill heights?
Yeah, they'll be identical.
Identical's?
The spacing, sill, the ed, the detailing.
And is that consistent with what you've suggested, Wendy?
If it's an exact replica, then you need, then you need accurate dimensions to compare to.
True.
So I, I measured only a few things on the building. Couple of things I measured were different from what was on the, uh, on the drawings or materials list, so, um, you, I, so I don't know. I haven't measured it. I don't know who Paul Ford is or Wendy gives the drawings, but it may be time to, well, maybe, maybe if he has a full set, you can flip it back or do a re-send. But the intent is to replicate the old building in terms of the trim and window heights and eve heights, and you need to know the precise measurements for it.
How about the reuse of the pilasters? Have you guys, did you consider that?
I didn't.
Reuse of the plasters. We just, we talked about bringing those down and reusing them.
If you go around the whole building, uh, some of them have been chopped to pieces by inserting rain leaders, things like that. There's nothing intrinsically unique about the pilasters. They're just one by five attached to a flat board, so if they get a reveal. So it's, I guess it's my opinion that we can replicate them exactly, and they'll look better than if we take them off, pull them off, break them, and try and fix them up and put them back. Now, we.
And then how about the siding, the, the reveal on the clavard?
On the siding? The intent is to use the Harvey siding, which is, the only difference, you know, once it's finished with the paint.
And keeping the same overlap that exists right now, the four and a half inches or whatever it is?
Correct. The only difference is you don't have the paint here, which is a good thing.
What else did I have on the list?
Dormers.
Dormers. Dormers, yeah.
Again, in the section, in the, in the plan, uh.
Did we just take it down?
There's the, the package.
We have.
So we go with the same size that's there?
Yeah. The, the dormers were put for purpose.
There are no dormers, right?
To make the room habitable.
Correct.
And so, uh, again, they were on the approved plan, so we cut them. It's not simple, it's rather, to make those bedrooms habitable.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at the set.
We've got that, yeah. I think the issue was, are they to the right scale? Right, that's, that's the question.
Well, that's, that becomes somewhat subjective.
No, we're talking about trying to replicate.
Well, they're exactly what Paul Ford projected.
I'm not talking about what he projected.
Well, none there, no.
Yeah, as I say.
I'm talking about matching, what we're trying to do is recreate the look of the, and style of the, and character of the building. And so therefore, I think one of the suggestions that came up is that the dormer should be in, of a different scale than what's been proposed.
No. Again, I hadn't had the opportunity to read the report. I took the dormers that were given to me.
I know, it's, it's printed one out.
So I'd be more than glad to, to read, digest, comment, and discuss, and.
Yeah, no, I think that's eminently fair.
Changing the dormers, certainly, something we'd certainly consider. That's not a issue.
Just a quick question, what the, that you handed out there. I'm looking at, says progress set September 14th. Is that the same thing? I assume it is, but just wanted to verify.
September, this 22nd. That just dated for this meeting as a.
Okay. But I mean.
I think you didn't get that.
But it's the same set as the 14th?
Is it the same set?
I think it's the same as the 14th.
Yeah, yes it is.
So what I'm looking at, as you see here, I'm looking at the PDF file.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that it's the same.
Yes, it is.
So it's probably the same, okay.
And then, in terms of the, um, well, you haven't had an opportunity to hear, to see all of the report yet, so it sounds like we need to give you an opportunity to look at that and come back with a, with a, you know, sort of modified proposal that will get us there.
Yeah.
So these dormers that are on the plans here are what's deemed is too large?
Well, yes. And there's, uh, on the elevations that we provide, where we have all four elevations, we also included the existing, not the existing, the elevation that was approved that was done by Paul Ford.
Right, and that's the one that actually has the columns corrected.
No, this is, I wouldn't do this under any circumstances. You know, it, what, what he did is he spaced the columns with an irregular spacing.
Yeah.
To have a center one on the front door.
Yeah, yeah.
And then he had, he had a, call it an A, an A, a B, an A, and a C. If you saw that coming down the street.
Say, who was drunk, right?
You'd have some serious.
Well, it sounds like the suggestion to maybe dig up some photographs, if, if we think there's a place to look would be worthwhile. To get the column spacing right.
The column spacing we're proposing is what's on the building right now. We both, what's column spacing.
Those are, those are.
Changed that.
Yeah, he changed those, right? So the question is, is there, is that representative of what existed, or is that representative of what somebody changed it to?
Who knows? No one knows. I mean, it's.
I mean, we can, you know, we can, we can peel back the layers on this, you know, all the way back to the 1850s. And I don't have any documentation of the changes that went on that got it to what it is right now.
And is there, would there be no place to find any photographic?
There might be something in the archives.
Maybe the Historical Society?
Yeah, Historical Society.
There must have been something, they put the historic, the historicals in register, right?
Right.
To them.
It's not listed properly.
They just give out these little plaques if the house is old enough. May I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm through my list.
All right. All right. Looking at that rendition with the two dormers, is the slope on that roof the same as the slope on that rendition?
Are you talking about the main gable?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same as it's always been.
So it's just the.
It's just.
Perspective of the camera standing on the street.
Yeah, this is, you know, you're, we're standing way out on the street looking up, so it, it.
Tends to make it look squashed down.
If you look at the side elevation, which is the elevation, the south elevation. This elevation, the 12 pitch, is what's there now.
Okay.
The 12.
There is a window though, in that gable.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. It's right, right there.
The windows, the door, I used to say.
Right.
When you look at it in that picture, it looks much more similar than the smaller.
Yeah, right. I wasn't here for the initial, so.
Guilty by association now.
I guess I am guilty by association. And, you know, sometimes when we, and I live in an apple barn, and sometimes we try to, to preserve things and do the very, very best we can, but it's not always possible. We have no clue what went on back in the day, and who did what with what and where. I think the applicant is trying to do the very best that he can in order to make this as close to what it may have been, because we're not really sure what it really was before people started doing their various alliterations over time. And I think the other thing that, that Mr. Sandell has brought up, and I think it's a very important point. This was approved. This was approved.
This was not approved.
I thought this was approved.
No, the moving of the existing building, the reuse of it was approved.
Okay.
The fact that we now have at least reports that say it's not cost effective to do that, the, the alternative was to come back and propose a reconstruction or a replication of the building to be consistent with historic standards and that standard, which is why we asked Wendy to review it. So that's what we're looking at now, is the proposal, right?
But did we approve, did the planning board approve Buildings B and Building C?
Yeah, I don't think that's on the table.
I understand that, Steve.
That's not what we're talking about, I think.
What we're talking about is A, correct?
We're talking about the Weatherby House, right?
Which is part of Building A.
Right.
But I don't, at least in my mind, that's where I was.
I'm not sure where you're going with it.
That's why I was.
I'm not sure where we're going with it either.
Well, that's why I was asking the question about the massing and so forth. Like, I, I appreciate what Wendy said, but I agree with you is that we approved that massing the way it is. And so as far as I'm concerned, like any changes to Building A, the new part of the building, then, I know they're both new, the new, new part of the building, not the reconstructed Weatherby House part of the building, is sort of off the table. That's been approved. So like you said, we're not going back to rehash that and relook at it, at least in my mind.
That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, we're only looking at the, the, now it's called the new reconstructed, or actually said replicated, that's the word, replicated elevations and replicated structure, if that is indeed, in fact, replicating the historic value of this Greek Revival home in such a way that we would approve it, is what I think is on the table, right?
That's, that's what I would say. I don't think, I, I think, I appreciate the, the notion about the massing is different, but, you know, that's not one of the things I think we need to address. I think what we're trying to address is the replication of the building. Are the elements, are there enough elements to it that we feel like we've got a fairly accurate replication without, you know, without going down to the, you know, the steel cut nails and stuff, okay, so.
And I think like Wendy said, the, it's all about the details in the sense of the clavard, the, the trim, at least for me, it's, it's about replicating the trim so it looks correct and it's not some, you know, like I said, aluminum or vinyl siding, which I know it's not, but that would be like not in character. The only thing I would say is, based on what Wendy suggested, is there any way maybe to size down those dormers potentially, or reduce them?
On the front.
On the, there's two on the front elevation of the Weatherby House replicated elevations. Would it be possible in more to keeping with the character of the Greek Revival additions that were often done with dormers, would that be possible to maybe reduce those by a small percentage?
Sure. I say that, so they missed my plan.
I mean, they were approved to be, uh, put on the existing Weatherby structure.
That, that is correct, yes.
At the size that we've got them there, which is good height and light and ventilation for the living space up there. I'm afraid if we shrink them, you're going to have headbangers and then have a, have a compromised unit.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I think what we're trying to find is what's that collection of, of changes or, or sort of modifications that get us to, you know, sort of the look and feel that we're, we're trying to achieve without replicating everything. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're not moving the whole building over and adding dormers. We're rebuilding the whole thing and we're using Hardy board and we're using different materials. And, you know, those trade-offs are trade-offs, at least speaking for myself, I'm willing to make. But I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is we ought to take a look at the work that Wendy has done, walk through it and say, here's the collection of things that if we put them all together, we're getting pretty close. You know, it's not perfect, we're not looking for perfect, but we're getting pretty close.
I think the thing is that we, being myself, the whole client, right to Weatherby House, it's a, it's quite a simple building, so if there was no notion that we needed to change it, rebuilding it, reconstructing it was a really good solution.
Um, yes, I'm sorry.
I want to make three points. Uh, one is that the drawings that I was using, the auto site, both drawings are different from these drawings. So each dormer is smaller, they're shorter. Uh, and the, the roof pitch on these drawings is look shallower than the set that I was working from. Um, and thirdly, then in terms of, so that things may have changed over time.
Sounds that way.
And then thirdly, in terms of trying to get historic character with the windows, the original windows would have been wood and would have had, um, a deep, deep monthens with a sharp profile. Um, and I think that if you're trying to get the look of a shark house, and if you don't, true divided lights are preferable, but if you don't have that, then you need to look carefully at the monthens that are, the applied monthens that are proposed, so that you get the shadow line that looks like divided.
I think we both know, if you put a true divided light on, or energy could be required to put a storm sash on the exterior, there goes your divided light aesthetic, because that's just a single piece of glass, and you put, you know, one of the knuckle benders on the exterior. So the, kind of the compromise is the simulated divided light, it's called, where you have a button, a good sized one on the exterior and the interior and a spacer bar in between. And that gives you the, the button being proud of the glass, uh, which is what we're proposing. A Marvin or equivalent of true divided light, or simulated divided light, not true divided. Just kind of industry standard and kind of where you wind up.
Um, I guess my, my suggestion is you look at, at the, you, you have the opportunity to read what, what Wendy's done already, and I would also suggest consulting her directly.
Yes.
So you work out a package that, I mean, maybe between the two, you think really does get us much closer to sort of the historic replication, if you will.
I'd be glad to do that.
But that, that's just sort of my suggestion.
Let me chip on here for a minute. I think, we've kind of put both of them in a box. And the fact that we came back and we gave you the elevations and said, here, here's, here's what we approved, which I'm not sure is necessarily what we want when the house was to be moved. So I think it was somewhat unfair to both of you guys. But I think in fairness to us, I think that when we, when you open up the doors and you take the Harvey windows and you send it back to Mr. Harvey, right, I would expect something to be replaced closer to what was the original to the house than what it currently is to the house.
I guess I'd have to go dig a lot with Doug Smith and historical to see if I can find what you.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, that the trim molding has to be exactly what it was when they built it, but I think it has to be exactly in the line, considered in the line of what was being used for the type of house when the type of house was being built. Right? So, I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking for. I'm not expecting you to, as much as I'd love to take, have you take it back to what it was brand new when it was original, right? The reality is I can't do that.
Can't.
You've already got a set of elevations that you're working with, right? But I think that there are small things, and whether it's trim, whether it's molding, what, whatever it is, it can be done to look at that house, and maybe, maybe the roof is flat instead of got, uh, wraps around the way that it is, or maybe the dormers are smaller. Because I would look to you and Wendy to sit there and see what makes sense to make that house look representative of what it was. Because I'm going to suggest that we go one step farther, that regardless of what the final outcome is, and that is, is to take the effort to go through the historical documents and find out what that house really looked like when it was built, put a placard and said, this is, this is the house that we were building. This is the house as it evolved over time.
The only thing that's likely to have changed that I can tell is the porch.
Is what?
The porch.
The porch.
I think that the trim and the windows. I think that the trim and the windows, they care, not the window sash, but the window casings.
And we can recreate that.
The door, the front door looks original.
It sounds like we're getting, I like that idea of having an actual plac or something that says, this is a replication of the George Weatherby House, something like that.
You talked about having a kind of an interpretive representation of the historic house in history within...
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. It's not unlike what it was suggested to do for the brewery. So, I mean, that's where I come down with.
Yeah, I think, I mean, looking at these elevations, I'm happy to see that seems like you've really replicated the details and, you know, it looks very good from these closed elevations. I guess I would go on record as just saying, I know maybe it's not completely original, that's why I asked the question about, but it does kind of bother me about the porch spacing, the columns, that it's offset from the door, and I don't know if there's something that you could do to center that, because it sounded like centering, that was sort of historical, potentially, at the time that this was designed. Typically, they would center the columns, right, to either side of the door, so...
Would you move the door? I mean, it's going into a retail space.
Well, if you move the door, though, then doesn't that mess up the window fenestration, the pattern?
No, I'm saying we could rethink the window elevation, keep the same size, but do a shuffle where the front door turns into...
Instead of two windows, door, three, yeah.
I know, I think that would actually then not be replicate the elevation that I see there on the picture.
Well, then it doesn't, kind of have a...
Darn if you do and darn if you don't.
Move the columns, it's very simple.
It would seem that...
Move the columns. No?
If you go down the road, which is where, nobody sits in front of this building...
Sees it straight on?
You're in your car going to Morning Glories, and as you know, you know, the window facade is recessed way back, not way back, but back, and the columns are what you read, so as you go by, it's a changing pattern between the openings from the columns and what you're seeing.
So you're saying, then, that the columns were offset deliberately?
That they're, well, that they're evenly spaced right now.
Those are the original locations.
Right now.
Yeah, that's what, to me, what is important.
And you think those are the original locations?
I would, I guess I'd bet something.
I don't think so.
Okay, no. The fact of the matter is it's gonna be up much closer to the street, so you're not gonna even have that, that sort of distance perspective on it as you go by, right? I mean, you're gonna be going by it pretty quick.
Well, anyway, it's, I could live either way, to be honest, so, I was just saying, since we're constructing it from scratch, it might be good to try to see if you could center the columns in some way around the door, but if it's not possible or the visual look's not gonna be right, then, you know, I can live with this. And again, personally, I agree with you, I kind of like the, how the porch wraps around, since this is going to be retail, and then it goes all the way, and it provides protection for that other door, for the retail entrance, so, you know, it may not be the most historically accurate, but I do think it's not, yeah, I do think it's logical and nice for the use that this particular building's gonna be, because the problem, I think we have two masters here to some degree, you know, we're trying to replicate it and be historically accurate, but it's also going to be retail, and it was never designed originally to be a retail location, so we're looking at two different things here. And so I think that's where we have to kind of compromise and get, as you said, as close as possible.
Yeah, I just think you're gonna, you've heard a lot here today that I guess you hadn't heard, so I want to give you the opportunity to look through it all and figure out what the right package is, so to speak, for lack of a better term. And I would ask that you consult with Wendy, too, you know, with any questions you have or what, maybe between the two of you, you could come up with something that feels like a pretty good compromise.
While we're doing that, do we put the project on hold, or can we proceed with pre-construction work?
Yes, that's...
Do we need to put the project on hold while we go through that design process, or can we move forward and...
I guess you had to tell me if this will, I mean, if we end up changing a few of these details, is it gonna, I mean, it's really up to you, really.
I don't think we're gonna change the footprint.
Right, so, you know, to the extent that whatever we're talking about needs to have sort of final approval, I would say you probably don't want to do those things, whatever they are, right?
Dormers and dimensions, if it's column spacing and dormer height, that has no impact on a foundational footprint.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see anything that would slow you down from that, right?
I'm just saying, as you get into the built structure, if you want to try to start building the dormers, then we come back and say, oh, we should have smaller dormers, then, you know, that kind of thing.
No, no, we're just wondering if we can, we start the demolition work and start the ground clearance and utilities and foundation work.
I would take that.
It's up to the building department, too, because I'm not sure what's happening with the...
I don't think there's anything we would say that would slow you down on that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think what we're concerned with here is just the materials and the character, and like I said, we've already approved the massing and the basic outlines of all the buildings, of Building A, B, and C.
And I was even gonna make a suggestion, if we were able to keep the dormers, maybe we could upgrade to cedar siding or something for the real wood trim onto the hardy board on the Weatherby portion, if that makes a difference.
I don't mind that. I like your suggestion, where we comprehend this and then make a discussion on kind of what some of the...
Yeah, I don't think I heard anything here yet, and I'll put it to the rest of my fellow members here, but I don't think I've heard anything here yet that are things that can't get worked out and would impact your construction process and all of that, but you're the experts on that, not us, so...
I guess you're concerned that this will be next meeting and next meeting and, you know, all the summer.
If you can come back at the next meeting with, you know, kind of a package that works, then I think we'll be in good shape.
We're not too badly jammed at the next meeting.
Particularly if you could, you know, sort of distribute it, you know, once you've done it, distribute it to us so we can see it before we come to the meeting, right?
Well, and I also wanted to say, Wendy may not have been privy to some of the discussions we had, because I'm thinking now, like, about, I liked how she said about materials and natural materials, but the stone foundation, if I remember right, and hopefully I'm not hallucinating, didn't you mention that you might rework some of the stone foundation, the stones as like maybe a brick retaining wall? Not the foundation, no, but as a retaining wall or somewhere on the side?
This is a, the plan that indicates that, that shows that?
Oh, okay.
This is the footprint of the interior of the Weatherby, this is the porch wrapping round, and we were protecting, taking the existing big granite blocks out, setting them down, because we've got a bit of a grade from, here's the sidewalk, here's the connecting path, we're proposing to set those down at a seating height?
Oh, yeah.
And then just have a kind of a smooth lawn, green grass going up, and then this kind of floats over it, and so the stairs come up through, so this is, we thought a really good foreground for the colonnade and the house, and there's the sign and the thing, and then just increase the sidewalk, so if you wanted to, if you had the right retailer in here who wanted to kind of animate this space?
Yep, right, no, I, but I think that goes to, I guess what I'm saying is, that was something about the materials that maybe she wasn't aware of, that if you guys got together and just sort of discussed, that's a non-issue then.
As long as it doesn't violate the Federalist look and all...
Yeah.
Um, and, or, break for Iowa, I'm sorry, you know, it's, one of the things I would like to make sure, though, is if Wendy had an old set of drawings that dimensionally are different, let's make sure she gets an updated set, updated set.
Yes.
Okay. Does that work?
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Yes, right.
Excellent.
So when do we see you next?
Two weeks. Are we?
It's scheduled eight fifteen on October thirteenth.
Okay.
Write it down.
Well, and I know it seems like a long process, but I mean, the elevations that I'm looking at here, I think they've come a long way, and so there's been really good progress, so...
Which, October, what was it due?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you. Okay, eight fifteen?
Eight fifteen.
Great.
I guess I'll coordinate with you on...
Yeah, I need to get some kind of estimate from Wendy about what the cost of...
You just contract direct.
Give us a chunk of money and what they have.
Okay, so thank you very much, and thank you Wendy for all of your work.
Yes.
Not only in the past, but to come.
All the way from Beverly, right?
All the way.
And you probably couldn't find a place to park here either. Oh, did you?
Yeah, what was it?
What's going on?
It's open glass for this one.
Oh, I thought it was something like that, yeah.
Just the report.
Okay, let's move on, we're running a little bit late here, but let's move on to the Green Bush visioning. Mr. Brovitz here, and we'll turn the floor over to you.
It's fourteen four, okay, we'll work again.
Just unplug the cable and plug it back in.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because it should be sending out an HDMI signal by default.
It's the old turn it off and turn it on again.
Power center.
It does, I can't see it, it's behind Laura's head, it says HDMI, right?
There you go.
See, that's what they pay me for, that's $10,000, please.
There we go. What would we do without you? All right. Here we go. So, my name is Ted Brovitz, I've been working for the last couple of years with the Economic Development Commission, and this year we're working on what we call vision plans, and I came to you a few months ago to talk to you about the North Situate Vision Plan, and we are just putting together the vision plan now for Green Bush Driftway, and we have a preliminary report, which was just recently done, the last week or the week before, I'd be happy to send it out to the board members if you're interested in seeing the full report.
I would love that.
So I'm gonna give you a synopsis of what's in the report today, you know, as we did with the North Situate Plan, we're looking at existing conditions and trends, going backwards and looking at relevant plans and policies and regulations. You may remember that in this village center, there was another, in 2004, another streetscape study and development study in anticipation of the new train line, MBTA commuter line being reestablished here as well as in North Situate. Then 2014, there was a market analysis done as part of an overall economic development plan for the town, so we looked at that and at what it said about this district, and then we did brainstorming with the Economic Development Commission back in June, and came up with a series of conceptual drawings to show potential changes over time, you know, short-term ideas as well as long-term ideas in this area.
Ted, before you leave that slide, I just want to make sure I'm clear what the visioning was focused on here, right? Is this focused on economic growth and economic development to the, in other words, it wasn't broader than that, it wasn't looking at other elements of like future town planning?
It's looking at all elements, all community development as well as economic development issues and ideas, so, yeah, there's a focus on, being the EDC, there's a focus on what type of business development can we generate over time in this district and in all districts, but also what are some of the other amenities, public and civic amenities, that could be added to or enhanced within the district? So it's a combination of the two. You know, we've got some real assets here, you know, civic assets here that, you know, are fantastic, but there are things that we can do to make them even better.
Now, just to, before we go on, you didn't share this presentation yet with Laura, is that correct, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have it? Did you send that electronically?
She's got the report.
I don't know if I have an electronic version of it.
Not this, no.
Okay, that was what I was asking, I was just reviewing my...
Embellishments on...
No problem, so like I said, if you could send it to us...
Again, it's a preliminary report, because it's only basically, you know, it's the EDC visioning process. We need to vet this out, obviously, with the boards and the public.
Absolutely, I just remember when you came in for North Situate, I was able to follow along electronically.
Oh, okay.
Because we had the preliminary report, so I was just asking if we had a similar report for Green Bush. The answer is no.
Yeah, I should have got that out to you the week before last, sorry about that.
No, 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 it's all... Just, I was just asking, clarifying point.
Merit for me, I guess, right? So, yeah, so back in June, we had a brainstorming session to talk about the future of the district, and really what we're talking about is, you know, starting at the, it worked a second ago, there you go, starting at the roundabout, you know, all the things that are around the roundabout, and heading up the Driftway to beyond, this is the old landfill right here, up to the wastewater treatment plant, so taking in the North River Conservation Park, taking in Widow's Walk, basically that's the district we're looking at, we're looking at old Green Bush, you know, as well as the area around the train station, you know, the area, the residential area on the south side of the corridor, up to the park and the golf, and the golf course. Yeah, this takes a more showing, you know, the parcels that are involved with the golf course and the conservation park down here. There's no shot, yeah. So, you know, basically, to give you sort of a snapshot, you all know the logistics as well as anybody, of course, but, you know, it's, Green Bush is a traditional neighborhood center, it's an old historic area, commuter line was reintroduced to the town in 2004?
Seven.
Seven, 2007.
Next year will be ten years.
Ten years, right, right. There are a lot of commercial and light industrial uses, a lot of service and repair-type uses that are sort of in and around the district, small-scale type stuff, and then large-scale with the Situate Concrete Pipe Company, that's been there for a long time. In fact, this is an old picture of that site, generating, you know, taking the sand up and creating concrete. There are a lot of beautiful natural amenities and recreational amenities there with the park and with the Widow's Walks and there's the Driftway Pathway and Old Oak and Pond, so it's a, it's a, it's a sort of a mixed bag of things, from very historic, you know, center of Green Bush to, you know, sort of no man's land up by the train station, and it's framed by what I think is one of the most beautiful assets on the South Shore, which is the North River, and that whole corridor and the whole view shed looking down towards, towards the mouth of the river, so it's, it's got some real opportunities for lots of different things, from recreation to business development to waterfront living. There, and within this area, it's a big area, it's much bigger than what we were looking at in North Situate, it's eight hundred, it's almost eight hundred acres of land, two hundred properties, you know, individual properties, some of them are combined properties, a lot of the public land is combined properties. There are a total of seventy-six dwelling units there, and seventy-six percent of the people that are living there or own property there are also living there. There's two hundred and seven buildings overall, the average age is fifty-five years, not very old, there's about half a million square feet of space, the average building is twenty-six hundred. Taxable value of the property is about a hundred and thirty-four million, with an average value per acre of a hundred and sixty-nine, that's fairly high. The highest value property are the residential condominiums at thirty-one, thirty-six million dollars total, and second only to the residential condos are town properties, between the transfer station, the old landfill, Widow's Walk, and the Conservation Park, and the wastewater treatment plant, and Green State's property, that's thirty-six million dollars worth of value.
I mean, when you say that, you're just saying it's...
Assessed, yeah, yeah.
It's assessed value, but it doesn't bring any taxes.
No, it doesn't generate any taxes. There's no user fees for using the park, right? There is a user fee for using the golf course, though, but that goes back into the facilities, obviously. We've done a business inventory there, and this is a sort of a product of that, it's a business directory that ultimately we would like to put up at the train station and other areas around... areas around the Driftway and Greenbush. It shows all the current businesses, the types of businesses, and their location. In terms of businesses, we counted 94 businesses or employers. It doesn't have to be necessarily retail businesses or restaurants. It can be just employers. The primary market area, according to the market analysis, was the surrounding neighborhoods and the 3A corridors. Some traffic has drawn off the 3A corridor into the district. There are lots of small-scale retail, food and drink, financial services, medical services. In fact, compared to other areas of the community, there's a higher percentage of services, professional services, repair services, and more specifically, medical services. This is sort of the area where you see more medical services than in other parts of Situate. There's also some light industrial contractors, repair services. As I mentioned before, some big stuff, and then small, lots of small stuff, such as on the Union Street area, Jenkins Place, some small areas behind on the south side of the corridor. There's some small-scale contractors and repair services. We counted about 400 people working in the district, and they're mostly small businesses. You know, 67% of the employers and businesses employ less than five people. So they're small-scale operations for the most part.
What are your little charts in there right there? I can't read any of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I should make that bigger. But this is where we are here. These are, this is North Situate Village. This is Harbor. This is Greenbush Driftway. So basically, this black area, the colors aren't showing up, that's all, those are all services. So that would be the fashion level and medical services. You can see that it's bigger than it is in the other two districts. It's fairly substantial in the Harbor district. There's a lot of people above the storefronts, you know, financial services, some medical services, a little bit smaller in North Situate, percentage-wise, too. This is all percentage. So you can see, the purple is, you know, finance, insurance, and that's bigger in the Harbor. There's a lot of real estate offices there, for example. In terms of retail itself, you can see that retail's a higher percentage in the Harbor than it is in Driftway. So in the report, the colors are clear. You can see, I guess you see that graphic.
What's the number in the middle?
Businesses.
Oh, that's what says 73 businesses?
Yeah.
But it says 94 businesses up...
Yeah, this is a couple of years old.
Oh, okay.
And we went and actually, you know, did a parcel-by-parcel search, and came up with 94 employers. So it's a little bit updated. I think that may have been from the 2014 market analysis.
Okay.
We used a different source of information. It was more detailed. In terms of streets, we looked at all the streets, the right-of-ways, and the particular amenities or elements. You find that, for the most part, there's, these are small streets, narrow streets, narrow right-of-ways. There's sidewalks and obviously the pathway on the Driftway. Doesn't quite make it all the way down to the Rotary. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion about what kind of enhancements can we make along the Driftway corridor? Can we do a boulevard treatment at the, at the, at the beginning of it, as it comes out of the right, out of the roundabouts? Can we extend the pathway through the roundabout onto 123, you know, to sort of set it up for extension into, you know, up in that area? And all these things are possible, but they're a challenge for the most part, because we do, we're working with fairly narrow right-of-ways, and in some cases, like the front, the first segment of the corridor, there's some wetlands on both sides, so it's really kind of hard to do a lot of treatments to those, to those streets. But, you know, in other areas where there's, there's better opportunities, further down the corridor, you're heading towards Harbor.
Well, and there is a sidewalk. It's not the maybe mixed-use path, but the sidewalk is all the way to the Rotary. I mean, you can walk from the Rotary to the, along the old Driftway.
This is the segment right here. So that's the segment right there that's heading out of the Rotary.
Oh, and then the sidewalk's on the, the medical buildings to the left end.
Right, right. So it's not really, it's a painted sidewalk. I mean, it's a sidewalk, it's a small asphalt with a small curb, but the Driftway path, which is on the south side, doesn't extend all the way.
Right.
And it's not really the most inviting place to walk either, you know? The trouble is that it's a narrow corridor, it's only a 40-foot right-of-way, so there's not a lot of extra space here. And then there's some wetlands on this side, and then this floodplain over there. Now, the floodplain would deter you from expanding the, you know, some streetscape improvements, but, you know, you don't have a whole lot to work with on this side anyway. So you really have to work with the property over here, which is a possibility in the long term. That building is for sale, you know, if that property were to be redeveloped, that's an opportunity possibly to do, you know, maybe a separate sidewalk, maybe some street trees, that sort of thing. And that's one of the focus of the plan is, you know, rather than having, you know, landscaped front yards, what can we do to sort of create some enclosure on a corridor with some nice street trees? That's probably more important than shrubs and flowers, in my estimate anyways, is how do we do a better job of creating some separation between the pedestrians and the travel lanes, and creating some enclosure in what becomes a broader and broader street, where you're getting faster traffic as you go further through the district towards the Harbor? So by the time we're getting into the park and to Widow's Walk, you know, they're carrying easily 50 miles an hour. I wouldn't say that's the average speed, but you can comfortably do it.
I'll use.
And I think that's the issue, especially if you're trying to make some connection between...
That's the speed limit, is 45.
Right, right. So that's where we want to make sure. We do some traffic calming applications so that we can make a better connection between the park and the golf course. In terms of public facilities, there's water and sewer there. You know, obviously, we have issues with the condition of the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the distribution or the collection system, which is a high priority at this point with the DPW making improvements to our current infrastructure before bringing on new development, which was obviously a clear issue up in North Situate, with that being, you know, a couple of phases away from getting done. And it's an issue here as far as how much development, even with a fair amount of capacity in the wastewater treatment plant, how much, you know, are they willing to allocate, given the condition of the system?
So there isn't additional capacity in the wastewater treatment plant?
Is there additional capacity?
There is not.
No.
Not for here, anyway, right?
Yeah, we learned, when you say there, the second point, the wastewater treatment has capacity or it's...
Capacity, that's a full capacity.
Yeah. Right now, on average, I believe it was 1.2?
1.28, right, and the remainder of it is intended...
Is allocated for...
For expansion in other areas, like in North Situate, and mine it in areas like that, right? So there really isn't any additional capacity, and at least from the, from the discussion we had with the DPW, that the only way to get that capacity for someplace like this would be to reduce the I and I.
Yeah, right, that's right. That's why their focus now is the, is the collection system. How can they fix that? There's natural gas available in the district, public transportation, obviously, total of 1,000 parking spaces in the two, between the two parking lots, although a good portion of that would be taken up as part of the MBTA sale of their property.
I would say the infrastructure piece is going to be a key piece.
Absolutely.
Not just wastewater, but obviously, water is...
Water, yeah, 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 right. So the 2004 Greenbush Planning Study, Streetscape Study, basically, this is a concept plan, which is interesting, because it's fairly similar to what's being proposed at 50, 50 Country Way, you know, and they're looking at, you know, sort of incremental infill development and redevelopment that's sort of keeping with the character of the Greenbush. They didn't look at too much of the, you know, the train station and all, but it was really more of a focus on the old village center. You know, and the focus was on renovating old buildings, upgrading old buildings, some mixed-use development is infill, making better pedestrian connections, and creating that village overlay district, and that was completed since. That was a follow-up project in the village business overlay district in place. The 2014 Economic Development Plan, they define the sub-areas as being, you know, the sort of the central TOD village around the train station, neighboring village area, which included the Greenbush, trying to introduce more multifamily housing, townhouses, cottage development, and they were thinking, I think, along the waterfront as well, where you see James Landing and Riverway. They encouraged the 40R smart growth zoning, and then making public realm improvements, which means streetscape improvements, park enhancements and that sort of thing, and signage, you know, gateway signage. And we're working on that now with a, with a wayfinding system. So the strengths and weaknesses, too much words. You can, you can read the report, but it's a gold ball, all that stuff. They did a visual preference survey. Basically, it showed a bunch of images as part of their, their public workshop, and the preferred images were, you know, mixed-use, a little bit higher density than what's out there today. They liked outdoor dining. They liked, you know, just different civic activities near the train station. The, they did a market analysis. They did what they call retail gap analysis. I think I explained this the last time, it was part of the North Situate project. But basically, they're comparing the, the supply of different types of businesses and services to the potential demand in the primary trade area, which goes out a ring from the center of this district. Secondary would be five miles out. Tertiary, third ring would be 10 miles out. And basically, what they found was that, here it is right here, you know, so the primary trade area around the Greenbush area, Greenbush Driftway, you know, gets basically to the North River and the Marshfield Line and a little bit into Norwell. The second trade area, people that might gravitate for certain uses of businesses, you know, gets into the Norwell Center, gets into kind of the hills of Marshfield, and then the third, the third trade area goes out even further. But it's really the, the primary trade area that we're really focused on. So basically, there's a surplus in beer and wine. Essentially, what that means is that people buy a lot of beer and wine, more than the...
New head and brewery.
Amount of the people that, you know, you expect people in the trade area to spend, so I don't know what that says for the people that drink in the trade area, but I'm assuming that that means they're just getting people off of 3A and that the people don't really have a drinking problem in the primary trade area. But there is a surplus of, of sales in, in beer and wine, which is good, because Reynolds must be doing really well.
So that's the only place, really, is to purchase.
Yeah, I think it might be, yeah. There is leakages and other things, obviously, auto-related services, what else? Food and drink, you know, restaurants, leakage of, let's see, basically leakage in all other sort of convenience retail services. So there's not a lot of retail in the district. There's some small-scale retail restaurant, but not a lot, not enough to serve the, the primary trade area, which is looking for other, you know, other things that we currently have. But all in all, they said that there is an opportunity for a couple of full-service restaurants, some limited-service restaurants, four to six retails, small retail shops, you know, amounting to 4,000 square feet. They could potentially do a national chain. I think what they're thinking about maybe is a food store, a grocery store, possibly a hotel, has some potential here, and more professional office space, you know, specifically, medical office has some potential here. This is a zoning map. I have been doing this work for almost 30 years. This is the most confusing zoning map I've ever seen.
Good thing we didn't add 40R.
Now you know why I'm here wanting to see us.
It takes a while to sort of decipher all the different layers here, but what it boils down to is that there are four base zoning districts, general business, commercial, residential, too, and conservation. And then there are various combinations of base districts and overlay districts. And a good portion of the land is in the planned development district, which was a bylaw that was passed in 1980, which covers most of our, our public land. So the Widow's Walk is under a PDD, and then there are subsections to that PDD, which allocates certain uses to certain parts of the golf course. And the same thing with the conservation park. It's all under planned development district. So there's a lot going on here as far as zoning, and, you know, Laura's got a, you know, a challenge in trying to describe and decipher on a parcel-by-parcel basis what, what people are subjected to as far as the land use regulations. We don't have to go over the zoning, because we've done that before, but basically, the sort of description of, you know, the purpose and the application of the base districts in, in this area, as well as the overlay districts. You know, obviously, the village business overlay district is really one of the, the tools that we're using for revitalization and reinvestment in some of these key village areas. It hasn't been used very much yet, but hopefully it will over the next couple of years. So then we started thinking about the future of the district, and we broke it down into seven different sub-districts. You know, the, and the first one is the, the area in and around the roundabout. And mostly, you know, this is all, you know, public land on this side. This is the Jacob Hatch Building over here. There's not really much you can do around the roundabout. So what we suggested was, we make this a better gateway. This is the main gateway, or one of the main gateways anyways, into Situate. So Kennedy's been doing a lot of good work in, in the interior space of the roundabout, some landscaping and some plantings in there lately. That's a good start, and we would like to expand it into some of the other edges of the roundabout, you know, over here, and on this side over here. We'd like to put some gateway treatments in there as part of the wayfinding system, maybe a welcome to Situate, sort of a monument sign, you know, possibly up in this area here, the little park in front of the pond. Just basically, you know, letting people know you've arrived in Situate and, you know, welcome. It's a sort of a proper, attractive entrance. And then we want to, you know, lead people down to different places in the community. So we want to lead people through wayfinding signage, down the Driftway, you know, give them a heads up that the Harbor's ahead, Widow's Walk's ahead, the Conservation Park is ahead, and those sorts of things. So basically, we want them to know that, you know, they get to the roundabout, you make a decision on, you know, going this way for these amenities or going this way for these amenities. Basically, let them know that there's things to do and see here, and we want you to stop and spend your money if you're not from town. The second area is the historic Greenbush Village. Just some, some snapshots, the package store, Morning Glory, which is really great, little bakery, a little bit, the law office here, beautiful cemetery there off of Union Street, which is sort of, you know, variable bit. And, you know, showing the different streets, the streetscape work that was done along Country Way over the last few years, or perhaps back a little bit longer than that, but, you know, really sort of, you know, focused on the east side of the corridor, not much as far as, you know, pedestrian amenities on the other side, but, you know, nice streetscape work on this side. So what, you know, what's planned for the core area of Greenbush is really what's happening today, which is sort of incremental infill development, some mixed-use, things that are in scale and character with, you know, the historic buildings and the, and the development patterns that are there today, but also recognizing that there are opportunities for small business developments, you know, at the end of Union Street where the old barn is, and as well as Jenkins Place. There's already a handful of small businesses, repair services, and other types of services. That's a real opportunity for small business development as we see it, whereas down here, it's an opportunity for sort of more mixed-use retail, some restaurants, some, you know, some infill development on Drew and Ford in this area right here. Tell me anytime if you have any questions or comments. So the third district is the area between the roundabout and Dunkin' Donuts, that first segment of the corridor. You've got the medical office building that's for sale. You've got the Jacob Hatch Building, Dunkin' Donuts, the small, like the river shed and the pizza place and the dance studio over here. And, and some of the land is tucked in behind the south side of the corridor, some repair services back there. So this is an opportunity, again, we're looking at really sort of from here to over the bridge to really the, the beginning of the MBTA. This is the service facility for MBTA, and Dunkin' Donuts over here. So, you know, looking at the possibility of maybe making a connection on McDonald Terrace between Ford, no, is it Ford? Yeah, and, and the Driftway, you know, try to sort of, you know, create a better connection up to Greenbush and disperse traffic a little bit. You know, some streetscape improvements on this first You know, some streetscape improvements on this first segment of the corridor, maybe some better street trees in here. You know, we're looking at this, if, you know, there's a possibility that it might be redeveloped, that it could be sort of a mixed use and maybe even elevated because it's in the Flood Plain. And more of an orientation towards the brook. I mean, you've got this nice brook that runs through here, and everyone sort of turns their back to it. So what we're trying to encourage is more sort of, you know, taking advantage of that asset and having, you know, a pathway down there, maybe some tables and chairs, really sort of activate that whole, animate that whole water course. There's an opportunity to end the McDonald Terrace, to put some new infill buildings in here. And more streetscape work up here in front of McDonald's. No, not Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, even Dunkin' Donuts, if they weren't able to sort of consolidate the parking behind and make some interior connections, you know, the frontage there could be a nice outdoor, you know, dining terrace. You could take your coffee out there in front of the building instead of in your car on the way out of the door, so.
Did you do anything with the trail that's right by Dunkin' Donuts? I actually don't even see it really delineated. That's a really nice, it's the old rail bed. The trail goes all the way out to the Herring River.
Right. Now, that's on the next slide. In fact, this is, you see the edge of it. What we're doing is creating a trailhead there and putting a little information booth. Actually, Laura's idea was to rent boats and kayaks and bikes and maybe some limited food and that sort of thing. Really create that, you know, the real amenity. And again, I'll show that on a different slide. But, you know, area for people to park and get out of the car and walk or take their bike down the trail. But also, at the end of the trail, you know, to make the connection with the pedestrian bridge, but I think, we heard last night, it was in the CPC program that was funded, was allocated years ago but hasn't been executed yet.
But now Conservation is back on track with that.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Yes. So I think that that's something that may be in the offing.
And then tie it back in with other trails that are behind James Landing and up to the Marina and ultimately will be up at Riverway as well. You know, make that whole connection along the waterfront.
Just don't walk it at dusk. I made the mistake of walking the dog, like, when the bugs came out.
Oh, yeah.
I had to run, literally run back to Dunkin' Donuts because I was getting eaten.
Imagine putting some bug spray in that.
Imagine you running to Dunkin' Donuts.
That's where his car was, and he went to Starbucks.
It was at the trailhead.
The trailhead, yeah.
There is actually a parking area there now.
There is, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, there's no signage there. There's no indication that it's a public space and...
There's a bicycle rack, there's a picnic table.
Yeah. So I think that's part of the wayfinding system is, you know, do a better job of, you know, assigning these places, this is the trailhead for the Herring Brook, you know, corridor and, you know, some information so that it's more inviting, more attractive to folks that aren't familiar with it, whether they're residents or visitors. It's important that people know that, you know, you're welcome here. This is the, sort of, the heart of the corridor, what we're calling the new Driftway Village Center. So today, you've got a variety of different things from the old, the MBTA parking lot, which is up to bid. Actually, two bids we got right now? They got two bids?
Yeah, there is a preferred bid.
Yeah. The Sashaw Auto Parts and Belkin Bait. We went there about a month ago, got some bait and got some great fish over across the street at Widow's Walk. Some perch, we're like, I swear they're that big. Fantastic. We have Doggy Day Care and Veterinary Services. And then we've got other things. You've got the nursing home, you've got the museum, the insurance company, a couple other things going further east on the corridor. So basically, you know, this is sort of the new village center. These are the parking lots, the MBTA parking lots, where you can see that's new development. You know, and it's a scale of a, you know, walkable, you know, pedestrian-oriented village center. So you've got mixed use with, you know, retail or commercial uses anyways, not necessarily retail, but commercial uses at the ground floor, residential and office uses above that. Internalize the parking so that, you know, again, you save the streetscape for pedestrians and you want, you know, amenities here like outdoor dining and displays and that sort of stuff. There's a piece of the corridor, which is particularly wide in this area, and we sort of captured that and made a sort of a little green out of that, sort of a central green in this new village center, so people can gather and you can maybe show movies on this and have, you know, farmers markets or what have you right across from the train station. On this side of the street, you can see that over time, you know, there's opportunities for infill development. This is the medical office building. This is Dunkin' Donuts. This is where the auto parts store is today. So if, you know, ultimately, some of that stuff is redeveloped or there's infill development, you know, they're all along the street, you're creating sort of an enclosure and an extension of that village center, you know, get a walkable village center. And at the same time, consolidating this parking area, you know, connecting it anyways so that you've got, you know, internal access and you don't have to get out on the Driftway to go to another building, another business. You can park here and get a cup of coffee, go grab your dog, you know, get a part for your car, you know, that sort of thing, go to the doctor's office. You know, what we're trying to do basically is, you know, understand that this is mixed use and there's going to be different times of days where there's a lot of demand, like, for example, first thing in the morning, the gym here is going to have a lot of people in this parking lot, but by 5:00 in the afternoon, they're not. Whereas, you know, something might happen here, like a big restaurant, they may have, you know, a lot of demand for this at night. So we're trying to, like, share parking and at the same time, you know, be efficient as far as, you know, the number of spaces that are actually needed in what ultimately is a mixed-use district. What else did I miss anywhere? Oh, this piece down here, you can see this is the trailhead to the Herring River, Herring Brook area down here. This would be a new infill residential development, right, adjacent to Riverway. You know, what we see as an opportunity down here, and this is sort of a, there's some services, a lot of bus storage in there, and there's a couple of different things going on there, but, you know, to have opportunities for waterfront views and waterfront residential development, I think is really, you know, there's limited opportunities in town, limited opportunities on the South Shore, and here's a great opportunity right here to reuse that space for, you know, nice condominiums, nice apartment buildings, what have you. So again, you know, between the two condominium projects, you know, that's $36 million in value. And here's an opportunity right here to add to that neighborhood and take advantage of those waterfront views.
Did you look, um, where it's the Herring Brook Plaza, which is the L-shaped thing right there? And then the trailhead? If you go down, which is off your map, there's like a barn and a bunch of sort of businesses down there. Did you look at that at all?
Yeah, that's the next, that's the next...
Next slide? Okay, keep...
Give me a second. Yeah, what we call a Driftway waterfront neighborhood. So basically, this is James Landing right here. This is the Riverway Development. This is the Marina. Here's the trail. Right here.
All right, so, yeah, those three builds are three or four buildings right there.
These buildings right here are, and, you know, those are viable businesses. Those are, you know, active businesses. There's some repair services, a welding service in there. You know, so we understand that, you know, looking forward, that that may not be the best place for that. If that were to sell, you know, we're encouraging it to be waterfront residential. But at the same time, we want to make sure that there's an opportunity for them to relocate in the Driftway. So I'll get to that in a second, but basically, what we're showing here is infill residential to go along with this. So again, you're creating some waterfront residential uses and views. And, you know, these are, you know, part of this neighborhood that's going to support, you know, the new Driftway Village Center and Green Bush. So it's good to have, you know, that mix where you've got, you know, the opportunity to take advantage of the waterfronts.
Did you look at the issue of sea level rise? I mean, it seems like you're putting more infrastructure in harm's way out there.
Well, I think it's going to be a lot like Riverway where those are elevated condominiums. You're going to have to go up and put the, tuck the parking underneath it. No doubt, you know, you're going to have to be a good substantial distance above the current ground elevation. And the idea again is, you know, here's a trail right here. Yes, ultimately, we didn't show this, we should have drawn this in, but make this connection over to this trail right. This is a spectacular trail right here that I don't think anybody knows about. We were walking, you might know it, we were walking on the Driftway path and we saw sort of an opening in the woods and a little trail sign, and we walked in there. And sure enough, there's a really great trail that has spectacular views and meanders over to the Marina. And I'm not sure if the idea is to extend it past this, but ultimately, we would want it to connect back with this trailhead here. Complete the trail.
Well, there was supposed, there's kind of like a berm along there right now.
There is, right here.
Yeah, exactly. And I think at one point, that was the plan, to have that be a trail. I don't know why it never happened.
I'm not sure, but it's definitely worth making a connection. So the sixth sub-district is what we're calling the Driftway Business Park. And this is a long-term, big idea plan. You're looking at the possible relocation of the transfer station, the concrete pipe, you know, that could, you know, certainly would stay there as long as they wanted. They want to sell, would be, it could be used for mixed use, it could be used for other business-related developments. And really making opportunities, better opportunities for small-scale businesses that are, you know, really part of, you know, heart of the, of this district. So what we're doing is, we're, again, we're relocating the transfer station, and we're creating sort of this block, these series of blocks for business development. So that, for example, you know, if there are small businesses here that are growing and they're outgrowing their space, they can move into bigger spaces over here. We're accommodating new development that might come to town. You know, for example, if this becomes residential down here, you know, those businesses could be relocated up to this new business park here. We're making a connection between Stockwell and the Driftway. We're also making connections between the village center and the train station and this new corridor here, which would be a new boulevard. But ultimately, you know, we're creating a new business park for small-scale existing businesses that are expanding to new businesses that we might recruit to town, given all the amenities in this district. Not only the MBTA station, but the fact that you've got Widow's Walk and you've got the North River, you're close to 3A. I think it's a real opportunity that we don't have in other areas of the community. So that's a big idea, the relocating the transfer station, but at the same time, it could be a really great opportunity economically for the community to reallocate that space for business development. And then finally, the North River Recreation District, we're calling it, which includes Widow's Walk and the North River Conservation Park and the land leading up to the wastewater treatment plant. Again, I think it's one of the most spectacular amenities on the South Shore. I think at this point, it's somewhat underutilized, and I think people from not, that aren't from Situate really don't know much about it. And, you know, at the same time, it's one of the best public courses in the state, and this is one of the best access points, public access points to the river. But this is the current view at the frontage of the Conservation Park. So you've got the porta-potties up front and you've got the sign here that's in front, but you can't see that from the street. And this is what the frontage looks like as you just turn into the driveway. So there's a lot of opportunities to enhance these facilities and make it more inviting, make it more clear to people that are driving to the harbor that, you know, you can go down here, you can go fishing, you can walk your dog, you can go on the trails, you can, you know, you can take your kayak out. It's just a great amenity, and I think that, you know, there are ways to sort of enhance it so that it's better used and more recognized by people that are visiting town. So the plan here is that at Widow's Walk, and again, this is a long-term plan, is to enhance the facilities. And people talked about the possibility of some small hotel and function center where you could have weddings and other sort of, you know, community gatherings, possibly relocating and rebuilding the clubhouse at some point, better streetscape improvements, and as we talked about, some enhancements at the park. But also, trying to calm the traffic down as you're getting into this part of the corridor because they are carrying a lot of speed. And we're trying to make some visual and physical connections between the golf course and the park. So maybe put a little boulevard treatment in there, more street trees to give people the, you know, the sense that, you know, this is a place where you slow down and make it easier for people to get back and forth across the street. We really think this should be looked at as sort of one large amenity and better connected visually and physically. So the transportation network, you know, again, the trails, you know, making connections with the trails, extending the Driftway pathway, you know, looking at, you know, some of the conflicts between pedestrians and bicyclists and cars. There's a lot of curb cuts, a lot of wide curb cuts along the corner that maybe could be consolidated or narrowed a little bit. You know, there's opportunities to make, you know, better connections. We showed this new sort of bridge system here in the village center, also extending the pedestrian trail up on the edge of the MBTA corridor, up to the bridge and beyond, and extending, as we talked about, the pathway through the Roundabout and on up 123, or at least to the edge of 23, 123. So in terms of actions, that's the one, I couldn't lay here, but we've pretty much talked about all of these different things. I would say one thing, and I'll stop here, is that I think it's really worth looking at creating a new base zoning district for village centers. I think that, you know, between the commercial district that we have here and the general business district and the overlay district, you know, there's lots of good things in the zoning, but there's no solid base standards that's going to ensure that you're going to get the mix of uses and the scale of use of development and the pedestrian orientation that were really targeted for this area as well as North River, North Situate, and maybe even the harbor. So, you know, we, you know, we're looking at, you know, the zoning orders right now and trying to figure out, are there ways that we could put together, you know, better zoning districts, standards that would, you know, address really the key things as far as creating or re-establishing, you know, the village, the village center fabric. And that, you know, that really boils down to a couple of simple things. The building placement and orientation, you know, if you're in the, if you're in the GB district and you're not using the overlay district, it's not a mixed-use project, you know, the minimum setback is 30 feet. It's hard to create that, you know, that walkability and that pedestrian orientation if, you know, you've got no man's land between the buildings and the sidewalks. So I think it's really important that we come up with a standard that really pushes the buildings towards the right way, towards the sidewalk, and that any space in between is activated, whether it's outdoor dining, whether it's display, whether it's an extension of the sidewalk with hardscapes. You know, we're trying to create village centers where people want to get out of their cars and walk because there's lots of interesting things from building to building to see and to experience. Also, what's really important is the placement of parking, you know, and, you know, you certainly don't want in a village center to have the parking in front of the building, ideally behind the building and connected to other adjacent parking lots, at least on the side of the building if there's gaps between the buildings. And, you know, things like the roof types, there's only one roof type allowed right now. I think it's, you know, you don't allow flat roofs, for example. And, you know, flat roofs are okay in certain settings, in certain village centers, and we have some other flat roofs. But, you know, there are things like frontage zones. For example, in the overlay district, there's a requirement that 50% of your frontage be retail. That's a good idea, but it's not quite exactly what you really want to do. If you're like, for example, if you're on, in North Situate Village, if you're in the core of that district, you want it all to be retail, but on some of the side streets or areas where there's not a cluster of retail, it's okay to be residential. So I think you need to be more specific in terms of, you know, where you're focusing your commercial, your residential, your retail and commercial frontages, and there should be, you know, indications on the zoning map where those are. So it's a good idea, but it's not fully, not fully fleshed out. And the other thing is, you know, in village centers, you want to have active open spaces. So rather than just a percentage, it's 20% in the overlay district, you want to make sure that there are usable open spaces. So that the percentage isn't so much the issue as it is making sure that if you've got an open space, you know, that there's public access to it, like a dining terrace that could serve as an open space. Even a rooftop garden or terrace could serve as an open space. So I think that, you know, if, when you're fine-tuning your zoning to, you know, to sort of attract the type and mix of uses that you want to see in your village centers, there are more specific standards that can be put together between the different things that we already have. that we already have, that make sure that you, you get that.
And how do you suggest putting that together? I mean, what, what's the, what's the mechanism for doing that? Are you suggesting some kind of, you know, development of standards?
Yeah, I think drafting some new standards for consideration, yeah. Because I think, you know, you know, what we're talking, talking about tonight, you know, the, the details of, you know, this new development, this redevelopment of a historic area, historic property, you don't have that opportunity if they're not using the overlay district. If they're just, if they're doing things that are by rights, you could get a building that's set back 50 feet in the middle of their lot, and has no relationship to the sidewalk or the street. And that's the danger, that, you know, there's, there's that possibility in our Village Centers. So I think that, you know, between the design guidelines, and the overlay district, and some of the other standards that are in the book, I think there are ways to sort of take pieces of each, and put together a base district that would apply to North, North Citu as well as this district here, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. That's, that's been very interesting, and we're going to get the, uh...
Yeah, I'll, I will give this to Laura tomorrow, so the presentation, which is the abbreviated version of the plan, but I'll also send the plan out, too. Or you've got it, so you can, you can send it on to...
You didn't already have it. All right.
Well, I'll make, if you didn't get it, I'll make sure you get it.
One last question. In the 2003 or 2004, the Cecil Study, for both North Citu and Green Bush, they had recommended burying the underground utilities. Is that something they're also recommending?
We looked at it a little bit in North Citu, it's really expensive.
I think I brought it up, and we were here for North Citu.
Yeah, it's really expensive. You know, $1,000 a linear foot, something like that. So it's possible, but, you know, who's going to pay for it? There's not a lot of, there's no money out there to do that. You can do it sort of site-by-site with development projects, but it's a big undertaking. You know, a secondary idea would be to put the, the utilities behind the buildings. But even then, you're looking at relocating within the buildings, the connection points, and that's expensive as well. Not as expensive as actually burying them, but, you know, the good news is that there's a lot of potentially new development on, on the MBTA lot, and that all could be buried underground. So where you've got sort of an open pallet, there's that opportunity. But, you know, in the Green Bush, where there's, the utilities are really evident, I mean, really there, I mean, visible. Not, not an easy thing to do.
When I get the reports distributed, and if people have comments, we can get them back to you.
Yeah, great, great.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Yeah, very nice. Okay. Are you going to have a hammer rock visioning?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we want to do all the villages.
Okay.
We've got a lot of work to do. I mean, the next step is really to sort of, you know, these are just brainstorming ideas at this point. The next step is to go out and talk with property owners, and have some public workshops, and, and open houses, and that sort of thing, to sort of, you know, test some of these ideas, make sure we're on the right track.
Thank you. Okay, we're running a little bit behind, but we're ready for the, the dog park.
As part of your vision, is there a dog park in that vision?
There is a dog park. Well, there's, yeah, there's one talked about at the Conservation Park, but there's also the, the Small Pocket Park across from the MBTA lot on North Citu. They talked about making that a dog park.
This one's down by the, by the Conservation Area.
Yeah. That could be the new transfer station.
I'm a big, I hate retail, I'm going to put them underground. Just don't put them underground, it has potential to be underwater.
Did he happen to mention where the transfer station would go if they moved it?
What's that?
Did he mention where the transfer station would move to, or just a...
Well, that'd be the $64,000 question.
Oh, no, I didn't miss anything, I was just curious. I liked it.
Talking about, you know, like door-to-door pickup.
The curb side.
Yeah, curb-side pickup.
Still need some...
Boy, side-by-side with a dog park.
Okay.
Okay, well, this is a hard act to follow, I'm sorry. That was very fancy. You know, me, I'm Adrian Rolls, and...
Hi, hi, Adrian.
All right, so basically, I've submitted everything to you over the last couple of weeks, supplement to our last meeting, and so you have the plan in front of you, and answer to a lot of your questions. So what I'd like to do is just reflect it back, to see if there was any further questions or any clarity, any comments, sort of submitted. And we have Greg Morrison here, who can describe in detail what's going on with the park, because sometimes that's a little bit hard to see. There's a very beautiful water garden there. And Greg, why don't, why don't we address this first, I suppose, would be best? If you want to maybe highlight some of the key points of the plan.
Want to copy and see what it looks like?
Sure. We had a little... I wasn't necessarily planning on making a full presentation tonight, but we did make some revisions to the plan based off of the last hearing that they were in front of you. The revisions we made, we went out, we had the wetlands delineated by a wetland scientist, Brad Holmes. Wetlands shown at this location by a dashed line. And then, based off of that, we revised the sizing and layout of the dog park, and the layout of the parking facility, to comply with the 50-foot setback to that wetland area. We also did bring into the design incorporating a couple of walking paths from the parking lot to connect out to the A.J. McGeekern Park out behind the proposed dog park facility, as well as interior of the dog fenced-in areas, some pituminous concrete walkways that would be accessed at two locations for each of the parks, both at the, the back in the main entrance, and the front along the driftway in the main entrance, specifying the double-gated entry boxes, specifying that we would have waste receptacles and bag dispensers at those locations where you enter and exit, as well as at multiple interior locations to the park itself. We added along the driftway, as you know, this property would access over a portion of the multi-use path there, so we added that there'd be a requirement for some signage and some striping at that intersection when that is to occur. That's the, the brief update on the plan here. We added, we added a rain garden to handle the runoff from the driveway, as well as the parking surface area. It was designed as an ADA-compliant parking area, provides two handicap parking spaces to it.
But mostly still a gravel parking lot?
Yeah, it's mostly still a gravel parking lot. The area, only area that wouldn't be gravel would be the accessway from the driftway down into the parking lot. We would pave, just because there's, there's an embankment there.
What about the handicap? Does that have to be paved as well?
It does not have to be handicapped. It can be a compacted gravel surface.
How is the, how would they market, though? There's a sign then, I guess?
Yeah, we're, we're proposing signs there, yep.
Blue signs, yeah. And is the, the double-gated entry on the, what end is that?
Sure, there's three double...
East end. Is that supposed to tie into the trail?
So, yeah, there's, there's three...
Is that what the access is for?
Yeah, this one here would be an access if you were coming in off the multi-use trail. This would be the primary access off of the parking lot in the dogwash station area. The third access is off the back, out to the A.J. McGeekern Trail Network.
Did you add two, two gated accesses from last night? There's only one before.
There was only one before.
Yeah, there was only one. This, this layout here allows two access points for each of the parks, now you see it. We also provided a maintenance gate into the large park and small park, so you could get a, you know, a vehicle in there whenever maintenance was needed.
Oh, we're down here, I see.
Just a question on the parking lot. How would you delineate the parking spaces, or would there be any? Or just, would it be like a bumper strip, or one of those?
Sure, typically, yeah, typically along the exterior of the parking lot, we'd put a curb of some kind, maybe a precast curb, or a railroad tie-type curb, and you'd put, you'd paint a stripe to designate those spots. You know, it's, you can't physically mark a gravel parking spot, but you could put demarcations along the perimeter of it.
Because I know, like, down at the Burger, JW's, at Rivershed, and at CP's Pizza, you know, it's the gravel, and sometimes it's hard to, like, know where the, the spaces
This is the payment right here. So this is the actual road right here, and then...
Correct. Right, this is where I'm at here.
And you looked at it in terms of getting out onto the driftway, there's no visual blocking, I mean, there's enough line, line of sight to get out?
At, at this location, there is. The, the driftway right here is relatively straight, it's right prior to the curve.
I know some of that, some of that pathway has trees and stuff in front of it between it, but this looks like it's right at the edge of the road.
And then, you can see right here, the pathway, right path, the road does go in a ways.
That goes down, too, right? Goes down pretty far?
It does.
The DPW had some concerns about sight distance, and also the, the dip when you go in, but...
In terms of what they have now, or, or did they change it to address those concerns?
Well, maybe, if I could back up for a minute, we had this conversation that I was, you know, that I told Steve about, where the, the overall approach to the town, to the CPC applications, is not going to require engineered plans at this stage. But that doesn't mean that they won't be required, you know, going down the road. So all of these things that require, you know, some engineering are not things that, that seem like they would have to be resolved now, but they could be, you know, things that are listed as things that have to be addressed. So those were some things that the DPW absolutely thought needed to be addressed, both the visibility coming out, the issues for crossing the multi-use trail, and the slope when it goes down into the property. So, you know, what the cost would be, how you would do that, you know, it's kind of a big, open question.
And, and just so we're clear, their concerns were, has somebody evaluated that and presented? I mean, in terms of line of sight, that kind of thing, or do they have specific changes that they're more interested in?
They were concerned that had somebody evaluated it.
Okay.
There was also one more point. This is from DPW, as of September 21st. At the Traffic Rules and Regulations Meeting held on September 20, the committee failed to approve the curb cut application for lack of information provided on the revised plan. So... That would have been my, I sent an application in, but I didn't hear anything back from it, so there wasn't any request of what they wanted. And I'll give you the laundry list. No proposed grading has been provided, no sight distances have been provided. Who's responsible for water bill, maintenance, turn off and on seasonally, and control of running water, sharp turn and grade change at entrance, signage on trail to alert walkers, bikers off crossing, bikers off crossing traffic, that didn't make any sense. Limit vehicle response time due to location of trail to entrance at driftway, suggest carry and carry-out policy, and elimination of water service and dogwash station. This is from DPW. I wish I received that.
And when was this? Was this on the 20th?
21st.
So that would have been yesterday?
Yesterday.
We just got the second one.
Right.
Okay.
So a lot of, a lot of those issues, I think, are the things that Laura's touching base on, that are more of the nuts and bolts of this, as opposed to the CPC projects are being looked at more on a general basis right now. My plan does not show the proposed grading. I don't think any of the projects are at that level of detail at this point. But, yeah, that's stuff we'd have to, have to resolve, obviously.
And, and through the...
I would suggest also, if you haven't already, with your CPC, you know, application, is make sure there's money in there to address those things, too, right? So that, so the grading gets done, and all those other things get done, right?
Absolutely. And there's a mechanism through the Stanton Foundation, which is the grant organization that we're obtaining the bulk of the funding for the project from. CPCs, we're requesting funds from them at a, at a 10% overall buy-in, because that's what's required by Stanton in order to fund the projects. So in and of that, there is a separate avail, the separate available amount of money specifically for design. However, we do need to clear certain hurdles with the town in order for them to say, okay, the town's fully committed. They'll allow us to apply for the funds for the full design plans, which would include the engineering, and, and a lot of the things that, as we just spoke to, that at this stage of, of the approval process, we haven't, you know, gone into, because it's, it is a lar, it's a large cost to do this, and without, you know, clear direction as to, you know, the viability of the project, it would be hard for us to allocate those funds in advance, and then try to, you know, recoup them on the back end.
So what do they need? Just CPC approval? Or what do they look for?
No, no, not full approval. We, we, we're working with the, the town administrator to identify and, and appoint person from the town perspective who's going to be in charge of the communication with Stanton in terms of the town buy-in, because as I said, they need to know that the town's committed to a certain extent before they'll allocate funds for even the design of the project. So it doesn't have to be a full approval, or a full, you know, a, a full vote of the town at the town meeting, but they are looking for certain key indicators that, you know, they are on board with this. So that's the next step in our project. But we feel like where we're at now is, you know, essentially where we need to be in terms of the CPC approval.
And where we're at right now, if I could just interject, is, you know, we've applied for a site plan waiver, and then in my last meeting, we got the, the list of questions that you proposed, and I came back with answers, and then I submitted them in writing to address them all, because we're actually trying to move for our site plan waiver approval tonight, so we can actually move on, so we can get our funding, and, and basically take it to the next step, understanding that a lot of things are conditional, but the overall 30,000-foot view, if it's, if it's something that's acceptable to you, is, is what we're requesting at this point.
Yeah. And a lot of, you know, even, it, there's a certain level of redundancy in terms of the questions that come out about the project. I mean, clearly, there's multiple channels and multiple, you know, groups that, that have input, you know, from Conservation to CPC to the Planning Board. I mean, we, we're, we've, we've done a, a fair amount of due diligence by trying to touch base with everybody, and, and sort of, you know, boil down everybody's concerns into a single list. For example, I just, you know, this, obviously, we just have, but, you know, a carry and carry-out policy. It's been our stance since day one, and everybody that we spoke to, that that's going to be a clear rule in the park, is carry and carry out. That's, you know, so certain things, we understand, you know, have to be solidified, and, and, you know, information has to be provided. However, we, you know, we want to make clear that, that the, the level of planning that has gone into this, you know, is certainly, you know, and on a meta-level, is, is certainly fairly in-depth, and, and, you know, we've, we've been at this for about a year now, so we've, we've looked at a lot of these contingencies, and we, and we encourage, you know, as, as much input as we can possibly get from the relevant board, so that we can continue to answer questions and to satisfy concerns.
So each department is that I'm trying to go to, to get a sign-off from each department. I have a sign-off from the Health Department, so that's one checkpoint. So I'm looking to you tonight, this committee, to say, we'd like what your plan is, you've addressed everything, 99% of it, and to that point, unless you have anything else that I've overlooked.
Well, I, I think it's probably, and I'll just speak to, speak sort of my view, and then we, hopefully, everybody can jump in here, but I think it's probably more, more a, we can vote to sort of endorse the overall concept, list those things that we think still need to be addressed, and that it won't necessarily be a site plan waiver, per se. What it will be is, these are the things that need to come back, and, you know, from the board's perspective, you know, on, on a 30,000-foot level, I, I think there's a fair amount of support here, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth here. But, but there's still, you know, the devil's in the details, and those have to be worked out.
Absolutely, and we are...
And we just want to make sure that you understand that, and that, you know, kind of what you're talking about, hopefully, that's enough to get your, your foundation comfortable enough to give you, you know, design dollars to proceed.
Yeah.
Because then, otherwise, you get into the, sort of, you know, you're kind of going in a circle there, you know?
Correct, yeah. It's sort of a catch-22, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's absolutely where we're looking to be, so.
Conceptual.
I have a question. This will most likely happen, and you'll have your dog park. How do you propose to maintain it in the future?
We'll have contractors, and then because of our 501(c)(3), we'll have fundraising that will provide for that.
Just as a suggestion, speaking with a neighbor, the MSPCA in Vero Beach, Florida, has a dog park in conjunction with their hospital and what have you, and for a $50 donation, you get a fob, you can open the gate, bring in your dog. So it becomes self-sustaining rather than trying to do a ton of fundraising. And whether, since you are a 501(c)(3), you could accept donations from people that would love to use your dog park because I think they have to have a bit of a vested interest in it. There's another dog park in Vero Beach that is open to everybody and it's a mess because there's no regulation, there's no anything. But if you create this in such a way that it is self-funded, it was also suggested to just increase the license fee, but I think people need to know that they have a vested interest in this, and they have a fob, it's good for a year, they can open the gate, and it locks behind them.
Appreciate your input. We want it to be very community feeling, very much like a baseball field and so forth in any parks or tennis court. Because we've already got significant plans for fundraising, and to be honest with you, it's not very expensive to maintain it, the rules that are forthcoming, which I printed up today, and Kim and I are going over them now, which will be posted, which will be, you know, adhered, and that people that are not abiding by it, they'll be asked to leave. So that does help to take care of the problem. Also, having come from a very large dog park in Wellington, Florida, which I referenced before, this was a very, this was a 100% self-policed park. It was ridiculous. And you can see the video on our Facebook page, that is our flagship video, that is, it's pristine, and people were asked to leave, they weren't accommodating to the rules. So I'm trying to make it affordable. I don't want to charge anybody another dime for anything.
Okay. It's just a thought.
Very clear about that.
It's just a thought.
How much money do you expect you need on an annual basis?
Well, from a, I mean, it's grass cutting right now. When was the last time any of us cut a grass?
Do you have a budget number, I guess is what I'm asking.
I mean, we're in the, yeah, we're in the $2,000 to $3,000 range if we don't, the, yeah. In terms of just, because we're, you're talking about the park at a certain level, we're not going to do snow removal unless, you know, we're required to, and that's something that we have to go over with the DPW in terms of parking lot maintenance and how the snow removal is going to go.
I thought the last time you were talking about, you were going to plow the parking lot and make, keep it open in the winter, so maybe I misunderstood.
We're keeping it open in the winter. If, you know, that's, I mean, at this point, we're going to ask the DPW that one question, but as far as the maintenance of the lawn, we have subcontractors, we're taking out the trash, we're managing everything from the fence in, and it's only two acres. So it's not a lot of area. I mean, I'm used to managing five and 10 acre horse farms, and so I understand the budget on stuff like that. So it's not very much.
Surprised, surprised it's that little.
Well, it's, the other thing too is you have to remember, it's private contracting, and it's going to go out to bid, so it's not, we're not paying a town rate. We had actually offered to the town in terms of, you know, we were very sensitive to not sort of taking work away from town employees. We didn't want to, you know, we said, we opened this up and said, you know, if this is something the DPW is interested in doing, we can sort of try to arrange any sort of, you know, reimbursement or some type of arrangement with the town, but they made it clear that they're at capacity, they're fully happy with us taking it private, so the waste, as we said, is carry and carry out. We're not expecting an enormous amount of waste removal to be going on, you know.
Well, I mean, we have receptacles.
Right.
We're not discounting that, and the fellow that I know that picks up from a lot of the residency, he charges next to nothing, it's unbelievable.
Yeah. So it's, yeah. And in terms, just to go back to your point, just, we're really, the initial thrust of the project was not only just a place for dogs. It's really, the effort that we've championed from the very beginning is to bring a value-added service to the community. We're looking for this to be an additional draw when we talk about residents that are looking at homes on the South Shore and that are dog lovers and dog owners, looking at Situate as a place where they have that additional amenity. I mean, is it going to be the tipping point for someone to buy? You know, it could be, you know, we see a lot of people that say, you know, these are the types of things they're looking for, they're looking, you know, for, you know, extra things, and we're looking for that to hopefully drive, you know, eyes to the town, visitors to the town, people to, you know, they come in, walk the dogs, you know, and then go down and grab a sandwich or, you know, spend money in the town. We really want this to be an inclusionary project that adds value to everybody, not just to people with, you know, animals. We're looking for this to draw dogs off of beach areas and places where they may be currently allowed to run off-leash, which is not the best for the dog or for the community at large in general. So, you know, that's certainly something that we thought of, and it's a great idea in terms of, you know, because it would alleviate a lot of the fundraising concern, but in our just, our initial outreach to the community, there's been a vast support in terms of people wanting to commit dollars before we could even take them.
You know, I think that, I understand exactly what you're saying, and certainly, it will be of value to the community, but maybe a few years down the road, leave yourself open to changing your mind.
Absolutely.
You never know.
Yeah, we're not going to lock anything in stone in terms of that.
We will zig when we need to, and zag when we need to, but also, the seniors have no outdoor resource right now. They have very little resources right now, and the handicapped people. So this is also an environment that's going to encourage from the surrounding communities as well for the wellbeing and just the general community feel of being able to sit down on a bench with a stranger. You know how friendly the town is anyway. So, you know, it's just a community, it adds to the downtown feel.
We see it as a logical, we see it as a logical extension of the Cole Parkway area, the trails, the, you know, the A.J. McEckren trails that are there now, so hopefully this becomes sort of integrated into that and, you know, will be a space.
It's a separate way.
So, any other questions?
No questions, I mean, I want to say, I saw the proposal, yeah, that was really nice with the connections to the trails, I think that was fantastic, so.
Greg designed all that out, so really, we need to applaud him for that. That was not my direction, that was 100% on his own. Just listening to what you all requested.
Yeah, definitely.
I think you're light years ahead of where you were when you...
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Any comments from the public?
All right, a motion. Are you ready?
Certainly.
The proponents of the dog park are to be commended for devoting time and energy to a project which will benefit many residents of the town of Situate. The new design is graceful and much more attractive than the first design. The connection to the McEckren trails will increase use of the beautiful natural areas surrounding the park. At the same time, this site will require maintenance, is in a location with high multimodal traffic volume within a Zone 2 to a public well with a number of issues that need to be addressed. I move the Planning Board make the following recommendations regarding the construction of a dog park at 167 Driftway. One, a site plan review must be approved by the Planning Board prior to the start of construction. This should address the issues and concerns identified below. Two, engineering plans should be provided, including design of a stormwater system or low-impact development techniques based on the volume and rate of stormwater from the park, parking lot, calculated under stormwater conditions typical of those normally considered by the board. In order to review stormwater management on the property, existing and proposed grades must be provided. Three, in order to establish safe conditions for traffic on the Driftway and exiting the site, site distances must be provided. The sharp turn and grade change at the entrance need further review. Site line documentation in accordance with AASH/ITO requirements and a curb cut permit must be provided prior to the start of construction. Four, signage should be installed on the Driftway trail to alert walkers and bikers to crossing traffic and to indicate a full stop at the entrance. Five, due to the location with, in a Zone 2 to a public well, the proponents of the dog park must meet with the Water Resource Committee prior to town meeting. Six, the entity responsible for maintenance and repair of the dog park and its parking facilities should be identified. Seven, the entity responsible for the water bill, turning off the water in times of drought and controlling water use must be identified. Water lines and spigots and lighting and lighting fixtures shall be included on the construction plans identified in Condition 1. The need for water and the dog wash station may need more consideration. Eight, the dog park parking accessible route and required signage must meet all requirements of the ADA and the Situate Commission on Disabilities. Nine, the applicant shall determine specific hours of operation and establish how the dog park shall be closed at night and who will be responsible for locking the facility. No lighting should be allowed beyond the operating hours. Ten, approval from the Traffic Rules Committee must be provided to the Planning Board prior to submission of the construction documents indicated in Condition 1. Eleven, it is recommended there be no fewer than seven covered waste receptacle and bag dispenser locations for animal waste. Specifications for the waste receptacles should be included on the construction plans identified in Condition 1. Waste should be disposed of by a private hauler employed by the Friends of Situate Dog Park and disposed of once weekly at a minimum. Twelve, there should be no fewer than three covered trash receptacles provided for use of patrons of the park. Specifications for the trash receptacles should be included on the construction plans. Trash should be disposed of by a private hauler recommended to be employed by the Friends of Situate Dog Park and disposed of once weekly at a minimum. Thirteen, the applicant should provide an operation and maintenance agreement for the dog park, parking area, stormwater system, and other private infrastructure to the Planning Board to address maintenance of the stormwater system, walks, parking, driveway, landscaping, dog waste receptacles, trash receptacles, and fencing. This should include provisions for snow removal and maintenance of safe conditions through the winter of all vehicles and walkways, and a description of annual maintenance of the driveway, parking area, lawn, and landscaping. Fourteen, the design, the signed design should be approved by the Planning Board. Fifteen, black vinyl coated chain link fence should be used wherever chain link fence is called for on the plans. Double gate shall be shown, shall be as shown on the plan. Sixteen, existing shade trees should remain wherever possible to provide shade and aesthetics for the dog park. Seventeen, the following rules are suggested. Dog owners are required to remove all waste. Dog owners are required to have voice control over their dog or dogs. Dog owners are required to always keep their dogs in sight. Dog owners are required to be present at all times. No smoking, alcohol, or food is allowed in the dog park. No pet grooming is allowed. A minimum age for dog handlers is required. Full immunizations of dogs are required. Dogs in heat are not allowed. A maximum number of dogs, pet owner/handler is established. Dogs must be healthy, dogs must be spayed or neutered. Dogs must display a current license. Dogs showing any signs of aggression must leave the park. Dogs must be on a leash to and from the park access points.
Those would be better for the people.
There you go.
One thing I might change, just, well, I know we're calling out a specific 501(c)(1)(3), but with respect to this, maybe we just ought to leave it at the applicant.
Okay.
We call, we say the applicant in other places, so maybe we should just...
Right, just say the applicant.
Maybe they changed the name or whatever, so.
I could have a couple changes.
Okay.
In the first paragraph, I suggested motion, the new design is much more attractive than the first design. We need to make a reference to what the new design is.
Okay, as shown on the plan.
Dated such and such by...
Plan, dated.
And then, I think...
What's the plan dated?
19.
9/19?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with making recommendations, the following recommendations regarding...
By the way, I think we could strike the, and much more attractive than the first design?
Yeah, I think so.
All right? We don't need to really have that in there?
Good, because the old design felt pretty rotten when he heard that.
The only one like it was the dogs.
And what do they know?
Obviously, a lot, they get the playground all for themselves.
So she is graceful and attractive, right?
So I can live with the recommend, it says, I move the Planning Board make the following recommendations, but I think that number one should say, this second sentence, should, this must address the issues and concerns identified below.
This must?
Where are you saying that, Bill?
Number one.
Instead of should, I'm saying must.
Oh, yeah.
And then the reference to the 501(c)(3).
I think also, there's a couple places where we say, we refer to construction plans identified in Condition 1, that refers to another draft that had been worked on earlier, so I think that needs to come out in number seven and number...
No, isn't it in the site plan review? Isn't that what you're saying?
Okay, okay, we can leave it there.
That's kind of what I thought, is all these things, these things in particular will be in the site plan review.
Different stuff we want.
Yeah, okay.
And also, just a question on number 13. We talked about snow removal, but we heard tonight that they might not.
But they might.
Just, I guess, provisions for snow removal?
Yeah, if there is, you know, that was a conversation we had planned on having with the town, because again, there's contracts that exist with the DPW in terms of snow removal that we don't want to infringe upon, so if they, something that they come back to us and say, it's on you, we'll add that to our maintenance budget.
Yeah, because it is town land, so... It's privately contracted out, there's nobody, you know, in the town that...
Okay, okay, then yeah, then we'll add that to our, that shouldn't be an issue.
It'll just all be addressed in the O&amp;M plan.
Yeah.
It's all right, I have a pickup truck, I'll just get a flat.
Have the dogs pull a sled?
I wouldn't have long that much.
Plow in the sled.
Any other comments?
It's been seconded, any other comments? Call those in favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you again, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, nicely done, the second.
Excuse me, Steve, I need to get a drink of water.
We're going to take a...
Too bad you couldn't find a better engineer, though.
Seventh inning stretch. Seventh inning stretch.
Okay, let's go back on the record. And we're here, this is an informal discussion on the new Roach Field parking lot proposal. And we have...
Dan, family, from, 10 hours from drive.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dan. The floor is yours.
I handed out an update, I did have an update from when I sent the original version, the version that I had at the time, because we have had more information from it, particularly Greg Morse. Seth and Greg had asked to go out to the field to look at a different option, so I put that into the slides that I gave you, just handed out there. So I hope you have the update on that. So, my name's Dan Family, I'm with Situate Little League. We're here to, Little League is here to ask for your advice and input on a proposal that we're putting forth to enhance the parking at Roach Field. We've had many meetings with the DPW, the traffic, Conservation, et cetera, before coming to you because we wanted to try and get all the issues on the table before coming to this board and presenting this information to you. The net of what we're trying to do is a project for the greater good of the community where we're taking the cars off the street and the neighborhoods and putting them in a proper parking spot. We've had a problem for about six years that I know of, that I've been involved, where the police complained to us about parking on the street. I know there are neighbor complaints about parking in their neighborhoods, blocking not only the street, but some... not only the street, but some driveways as well. One of the things that we did recently was having a butters meeting at the cost of Little League to have input from the people that live in the neighborhood and are most affected by the parking at this field. A lot of good ideas came out of that meeting, which I incorporated into the update proposal that we have today. Situate Little League has about six hundred, has over six hundred members, has about two hundred coaches and volunteers that participate in the league. Everybody in the program, when they start, pretty much goes and plays on this field, so it affects a lot of families in town. Each game has two teams of twelve to fifteen players on a team, so at any given time, between twenty-four and thirty players at the field. And if we have, and we do have back-to-back games, that means there's about forty-eight to sixty players that go, are trying to get in and out of the field about the same time. We have an operating budget that's a zero-dollar budget. We don't save any money, we spend whatever we have, we try and keep the fees equal to what we spend every year. We do raise money for capital improvements, and over the years, we've done a lot of field improvements for Situate. So we don't have a lot of money to spend, this is one of the reasons why we're coming to the town for this project. Our real goal as a league is to provide a safe and healthy environment for the players. And to that end, what we've done in the past is we've spent, in the last five years, we've spent over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on just field maintenance alone. That's cutting grass, providing dirt, getting the fields in a shape where nobody's going to get hurt, the kids can have fun and play on a decent field. We spent about five hundred thousand dollars in field improvements in that time, that's about five years. The five hundred thousand dollars includes the lights at the high school, about, I'm three hundred thousand dollars in that project, about two hundred and fifty was raised with Little League by the Reedy Foundation. Situate Little League put about a hundred thousand dollars into that project. We put new scoreboards at the high school in Green Bush Fields, new signs at the high school in Green Bush Fields. We've done safety fencing at gates, foul poles at Green Bush and Roach, batting cages at both of those fields as well. We put sheds at fields that lacked storage facilities. And lastly, we provide porta potties for all the fields. It's the first time we've asked the town for any money to spend on the fields. We're asking for your input and advice on this project, so that we can provide a safe environment for the kids. The, I don't want to go through the whole presentation, but I'll tell you a story. I started this project thinking about the issues that we've had with the neighbors and the police calling, the cars on the street, and my experience both as a parent of a player at the field and as an administrator of Little League. My biggest fear is that there's going to be a serious accident there. We have cars coming, cars parked on Beaver Dam Road, if any of you have ever had players there, you know the situation from the parking perspective. So my first idea was to put a parking lot in the back, out in right field, behind right field, and hide it in the woods, so it wouldn't affect the neighbors, nobody would see it, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that turned out to be a bad idea, because the police don't want to hide a parking lot out in the field, they want to be able to see what's going on in the parking lot. So we moved it in closer to the, closer to the road and closer to the field, so that it would be visible from the field. Then had the abutters meeting, and the feedback we got from the abutters meeting was great. They had issues with cutting trees down, which a lot of people do, and I understand that, they had issues, there were a whole bunch of things that happened at that, which made me take a look at. My original idea was not to move of the batting cage and to have it behind the batting cage. And after the discussion of the abutters meeting, I went back and looked at it and said, "Well, we could put this parking lot here, move the batting cage, and actually save money off the original proposal, because it would eliminate cutting down any trees and the stump removal." And talking to the folks that do the equipment at the field, it would be a minimal cost to move the batting cage. In fact, we may be able to just reuse the existing batting cage and just put new footings in at a different location. There are aluminum sleeves that go into the ground, or we could even reuse the poles and the net, save money that way. So that's where we stand right now, to, again, to net it out, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to keep going here. The other part of the abutters meeting was that there was feedback, why not enlarge the front parking lot and put cars there? My feeling frankly was that we couldn't put enough cars in the front parking lot to accommodate people coming in and out. I think there are other issues with that as well. But I did work with Greg, I'm sorry, Seth Malamud and Greg, who Seth had contacted Greg to go down and put an option together to enlarge your parking lot in the front and satisfy the requirements that way. So without going through the whole presentation, and I can certainly ask questions about any of the slides and the cost of what we're looking at and what we built into it, what I really want to put up is the diagram of the two slides and talk about those. So what we have for option one, which was, let me get rid of that notice, is to, to take a line about twenty-four feet from the right field fence, curve the parking lot around, and put the parking lot back there. If you, if you leave eighteen feet for two rows of cars and twenty-four feet for a space in between them, that's sixty-three feet. If you go back sixty-three feet from that line, you really don't hit any trees in there. There might be a couple, but you really, it's really that grassy area that has the batting cage, if you've driven by it at all. Goes about two hundred feet to put about twenty cars, rows of twenty cars each, which goes about to center field. So that's the area, we would take the existing batting cage and move that up into right field where there's a grassy area there. In fact, one of the suggestions by one of the selectmen was to have the parking lot such as this, so cars could face the field and people could sit in the parking lot and watch the games. I didn't think that was a bad idea as well. The parking lot would be gravel, the entrance would be paved, the entrance would come from Beaver Dam, there's enough space there. I had Taylor, I met with Taylor Billings before and had him out the other day to look at both spaces that we were looking at and discuss any issues that he might have there. Another picture I'll show is the, because you asked this before, this is my car sitting at where the exit would be, looking up Beaver Dam Road, there's a good sightline, looking up Beaver Dam Road toward gates. This is looking down the hill, you can see to the railroad tracks. And this is, this would be located directly across the street from Harseight Court. So we did take that into consideration in looking at where we were putting the entrance and the exit to that field. We would close the field, the plan includes putting a chain across the entrance to the field, so that we would close it in the off-season, so it couldn't be used, it wouldn't have to be plowed by the DPW, and again, we talked about gravel field with marked parking spots. In addition to that, it doesn't show on here, but part of the plan was to, I'll call it, revamp the existing parking lot on the left side of the screen in the front there, so that the railroad ties are cleaned up, the parking spaces are cleaned up, we had signage, and we have at least two handicap spots on that lower right-hand side of the parking lot. And I felt that was the best solution that we had. One of the abutters wanted to look at enlarging the front parking lot, and that is what option two is. And that would be putting, I think it's thirty-eight spaces and two handicap spots for a total of forty spaces. And this is just a rough drawing drawn up by, actually by Greg, based on his, you know, visit to the field and looking at what is there. That's basically it. I mean, I can show you the, what we built into the cost, we built in money for signage, for handicap signs, for signage, no parking, depending on which option. I would take that, that field and actually the front area, if we looked at the back parking lot, I would take the front area and actually delineate that better than it is now. The railroad ties are mostly rotten, it hasn't been maintained or hasn't been fixed in at least ten years that I know of. So we would clean that up, regrade it, put signs up, put handicap spots in, put a ramp going to the fence or close to the fence for handicap spots, and again, we included that in the, in the estimated cost. This still has thirty-one, the biggest part of this proposal is thirty-one thousand dollars, and that is, that included a lot of tree removal, so I think that would come down quite a bit, depending on what they find there. We have built in since day one, somewhere in there, I can't find it, engineering survey, five thousand dollars, additional signage for the entrance. We've discussed perhaps making that, if we do the back parking lot, perhaps making that a one-way out, right turn only. There's pluses and minuses to that, that's something I think the traffic engineers would bet out when we did the formal survey. You know, road cut and fence removal, there isn't a curb there, but they still have to put the entrance to the field if we did the back parking lot. Again, paving, we have ten thousand dollars in contingency there, an optional five thousand dollar pathway from the lot to the dugout. I don't think that's necessary, because there's a very nice grass park, grass walkway that goes from where the back parking lot would be to where the dugouts are. But we built that in, it was a suggestion by one of the groups that we met with along the way. We also, one of the updates, this was landscaping. One of the things I learned was you need one tree for eight parking spaces, you put a margin on it. So we, I added in about six trees, I think, for about forty spots, about five hundred dollars each. So we tried to think of everything we could. I think there is what I used to call a lot of fluff built into this. I don't think it would be that much for the thirty-one thousand dollars. Of course, there are always unseen things that come up, so that's why we put some contingencies in. So if we go back to, so we have option one and option two. I do have some issues with option two. The big issue I have is for the safety of the kids, it's, I think it's too close to the playing field. The way that's laid out, it's about fifteen feet from the playing field and about a couple feet behind where that white block is where the stands where people sit are. That green area where the driveway is currently is where the kids warm up. The, you don't know, players, pitchers in Little League cannot warm up on a playing field, they have to be outside the playing field. I used to get, I, as a coach, I used to get shited by the umpires for that, because I'd have the kid go down the right field line and warm up, and that's a no-no. So that's an area that kids play, there used to be a swing set there, town was supposed to replace it, they haven't. The other issue that I have with this is I think it would affect the Thomas Road abutters quite a bit, that's very close to the house. If you look at the picture, you have sixty feet between home plate and first base, and if you look at the house, the first house on Thomas Road is the street and the house that you see on the top of the screen. I think that's about fifty feet from that house, where that's delineated now, and there's a stream there. I was trying to get hold of Pat Gallowen today, after getting this, the day of yesterday, or being able to look at it yesterday, and there is a stream that runs pretty much along where that evergreen screening is, and frankly, I don't know what the abutment or the leeway you have to have away from a stream that runs along there and not get close to it. But that's, it's an alternative.
How does the traffic flow in the lot?
Pardon me?
How does the traffic flow in that lot?
That's a good question. I would say, well, my, my suggestion, if we were going to use that, it would be a one-way, coming in and going out.
It's the only way to do it, probably. Maybe it would be useful at this point to see if Seth and, might want to talk about this as well, I just want to make sure we've got everybody's input.
Sure, yeah, so my name's Seth Malamud, I actually live at 195 Beaver Dam, which is directly across from the.
Excuse me, could you come up and speak into the mic? Thank you.
Absolutely. Hi, good evening. I'll try to be brief. So my name is Seth Malamud, I live at 195 Beaver Dam, which is almost directly across from the curb, the proposed curb cut on the outfield plan. The, the, so, you know, I, having, living over there, I see the overflow from the games all the time. And when I initially saw the first plan that Dan had proposed at the abutters meeting, it was the plan clearcutting the woods, and that plan was for actually for sixty spots, which would be in addition to the existing lot, and the first thing that dawned on me was, it seems to me that that's, you know, a bit of killing the mosquito with the sledgehammer type thing, because as I saw it, from having lived there for seven years, there's only a handful of cars, and when I say a handful, I mean five to seven on a regular basis that park along Beaver Dam Road. So if, if there are indeed twenty-four kids and potentially double headers, even with that being the case and the need for additional parking, it seems to me that the current lot accommodates the vast majority of the cars. So if that's the case, why are we putting sixty spots in to accommodate the spill over onto Beaver Dam when that's only five to seven cars? It seems like a big project for that. So I walked the area that you see here, I paced it off myself, you know, informally with a tape measure, and then when I did that, it dawned on me that there's a lot of unused space there. So, being in the commercial real estate business, I took the measurements to somebody at my company, who's an engineer, and I said, "Look, here are the rough measurements, ballpark, could I put another fifteen cars here?" And he said, "Absolutely, all day long, of course you could, look at all this space." So it was at that point that I decided to take it a step further, I engaged Greg and asked him to meet me out there, and, and so he took an aerial photograph and used his software to overlay onto this photo, the plan that you see here. He hasn't taken formal measurements, done a meets and bounds description or anything like that. And what you see here is, accommodates forty spots. The packet that you see in front of you suggests that the existing parking lot has twelve to fifteen spaces. That's a measured space by regulation. The reality is, is that, as you probably know, in gravel parking lots, you put substantially more cars in those lots than the regulated space requires. So even in regulated spaces with what you see here, you could stick forty spots on there. I, when I first saw this, my initial thoughts, and I convey these to Greg, were at the abutters meeting, some of the neighbors near that evergreen screening expressed concerns about going too close to the stream, they're actually here tonight, and I said, "In order to accomplish this plan and satisfy the neighbors' concerns, this is going to have to get moved down towards Beaver Dam Road," which, as you can see from the bottom, there's a substantial amount of area between the handicap spots and the Beaver Dam fence line that is unused. So in theory, this would all shift far away from the existing stream and I think well within the existing area that's already parked upon. In addition to that, one of the other abutters had concerns about the island and affecting the existing island. Again, shifting this all down, you know, that would help alleviate some of those concerns. I'll also mention from the safety perspective, the Green Bush lot, if any of you are familiar with that, those cars park almost right up against the fence line, and in fact, the gravel goes around the bleacher area. And in fact, the gravel goes around the bleacher area. This doesn't even contemplate that, though certainly it could if we were to mimic what already exists at Green Bush. So just from those perspectives and the idea that an additional curb cut on a very busy Beaver Dam Road and taking out all of the nice grass area off the outfield, it seemed to me that this was a much less impactful plan. So again, this isn't formally done. Greg hasn't taken measurements. But the hope was that we could show something to the planning board and to other boards to say, "Look, here's a more thoughtful alternative. Why not explore this in the first instance rather than spend the engineering dollars to explore the outfield plan as the first option to satisfy the parking concerns?"
Okay, I'd like to address some of the things that were said that I don't necessarily agree with. The last thing you said, "We're going to be spending the dollars on engineering regardless." The fact is, we need more parking spots there regardless of whether it's 40 or 20. We're going to be spending engineering money no matter what we do. This will require, I think, as much engineering dollars as the outfield will. The second thing Greg mentions, which I dispute, he said five to seven cars on Green Bush. There may be at certain times five to seven cars on Green Bush. I've had to park almost halfway down the hill, almost to the railroad track sometimes when I've been there.
Are you talking about Beaver Dam Road?
Pardon?
Are you talking about Beaver Dam Road?
Beaver Dam Road.
Oh, okay.
Did I say?
You said Green Bush.
We also have people parking in Clifton, which is an area on the road, blocking driveways, which is, again, I think if you count the cars that are there and you look at the potential of 48 to 60 kids coming in and out of there, or, yeah, players at one time, I think there is a requirement. Do we need 50 in the outfield? I don't think we do. Do we need 30 to 40? I think we do. I think we absolutely do. I don't think we can put them there. Again, I look at this and I say that old grassy area, you have a parking lot that's three feet behind the stands. Greg mentioned Green Bush. If you tried to build Green Bush the way it was, the way it is today, it wouldn't happen. You couldn't build that field. There, we have the same problem down there. There's about 15 parking spots there. The only reason why that's alleviated, and sometimes not, there's still parking on 3A at some games I've been to. The only reason why it's not is because the water department is there and people park in that. And Little League has had complaints with them. They've threatened to put up a cast iron fence to stop some parking on their property. You know, various things have happened. And if you go to a game down there, there's people coming in and out of the parking lot. It's not a safe environment. The parking there is horrendous. And the only way it's alleviated is by the additional parking in the neighboring lot. So the other issue, you know, we didn't talk about the stream. I think there is a certain distance you have to be away from the stream. The other thing that wasn't mentioned and one of the objections that I took seriously in the first Butters meeting was cutting down trees. If you look at this proposal, you're going to be cutting down trees. There's a bunch of trees along that stream on the upside that you'd have to cut down to put in the evergreen screening. And there's a couple of trees in the front there. The other thing that I looked at or I thought about in, again, enlarging the front parking lot to accommodate everybody coming in and out of there was, and we'll have, you know, we'll have this traffic study done if we need to, but there are 30, 28 houses in Clifton Avenue and Thomas Road. It's the only exit out of that neighborhood. There's no other way to get out of there. We have cars blocking that street. If an emergency vehicle tried to get down there in the past couple of years during some of the games, it wouldn't be able to. So you're now adding more traffic onto that street as opposed to dividing the traffic between some parking here and some parking in the outfield. So again, I'm not in favor of this. It is an option. But I do see a lot of problems with it. Biggest problem I have is the safety of the kids and proximity to the field.
Okay.
Because it's being done at Green Bush, it would never happen today. If you tried to go Green Bush the way it is.
I think we got it. I think we got both inputs. I would actually like to try to give my board members an opportunity to ask some questions, if you don't mind, and then we'll get to the public and get some input there as well. Laura, do you have anything?
No, just, I think in some ways this application is very, should be treated similarly to the dog park in that when the board, you know, even when the board is ready, hopefully, you know, maybe not this meeting, but whenever, they can, again, make some recommendations and so on. But no, it just seems like there's a lot of information that still has to be vetted as far as, is there a stream? Is it, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of detail to cover.
There is a stream.
There's a lot of detail to cover either one, right, in terms of just delineating wetlands and all that kind of stuff.
Maybe having an independent traffic engineer look at both of them, you know, whatever.
Yeah?
Having a grandson that plays in EBL, I've seen more ballparks, double headers on Saturdays.
Sorry, if you could speak up low. I'm really deaf. I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear what you're saying. I'm really deaf.
I don't talk very loud either.
Okay. Well, I'll listen harder.
Having a grandson that plays in EBL, double headers on Saturdays and Sundays, different ballfields all over, one of the commonalities is the fact that they all need parking.
That they?
All need parking, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Regardless, the better the field, the more parking you need. Because it's not uncommon for us to have three cars there instead of one.
For one grandson?
One grandson. It's a function of timing.
Yeah.
Because you'll have a nine, an 11 o'clock, and a one o'clock game, or maybe a 3:30 game on it. So on proposal number two, how many spots do you currently have right now?
Well, if I measure that, there's about 15 to 17. And that includes parking all along there and parking on the island. There's about, what typically happens, if you go down and count the cars here, what typically happens is four cars parked along the island, which I don't particularly like. And they park in that, you can't see it, but the exit to the existing parking lot, which is only 18 feet wide, they park right up on the, off the gravel, on the grass, and on the corner. So you basically have a little more than one car width to get out of the parking lot.
So the answer is 12 to 17?
About 15 to 17.
Let me flip the coin over. How many parts, how many spots do you see there?
Well, let me first qualify that with, there's never been anybody who's gone out there and actually counted how many cars there are for any given day, whether it's a double header or a single game. So just a ballpark?
I've counted.
Best guess, I would tell you, I would tell you that I see no more than five to seven cars on Beaver Dam at any given time. And rarely, if ever, are they parked in Hartside Court, which is directly across the street. Though they are oftentimes on Clifton, I do know that, and the surrounding neighborhoods.
I'll go back. I'm not talking about the parking at Beaver Dam. I'm talking about the lot right next to Clifton.
How many parking spaces on that lot?
Yeah.
I think you could put 25 cars in the existing spots.
I disagree.
Yeah, I got it there. I'm all set.
But you don't think I can add anything to the conversation?
I don't really. Maybe one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is your opposition to the park towards a lot behind right field?
So I have two comments just generally. One is, I think what you're doing here is putting a very large parking area to accommodate very few cars, which just generally speaking, from an aesthetic perspective and a use of the grass perspective, is not, doesn't to me strike me as necessary. Second thing is, is that you're putting a new curb cut onto Beaver Dam, which is just on the hill and across from Hartside, which I think impacts traffic and safety also. I guess the last thing would be, you know, those are mature growth trees down there at the bottom. So just from an aesthetic perspective, when you come over Beaver Dam, right at the top of the hill there, you're right at the top of that crest before you head down to the, that is a very picturesque area. It's the way that everybody gets down into the harbor for heritage days, for everything else. You start clearcutting that area and you put a parking lot there that's only really in use a few months of the year. To me, that just takes away a lot from the town.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, no.
Not my place to say. I think it's Stephen's place to say.
First of all, there's 40 feet between the two trees we were talking about. So there's certainly enough to put a 24-foot or greater exit to that parking lot. If you get out of the trees, you're not looking down, you're looking down Beaver Dam Road. I think the view down this way toward the railroad tracks is actually a better view than you get coming out of Clifton Road. If we're adding more traffic to Clifton Road, you see the cars coming up the hill a lot later than you'll see the cars coming up the hill here. The other direction is about the same. You're looking down pretty much the same distance down a straightaway. The Clifton Road exit, I think cars are going faster because they're coming up the hill and then hitting the straightaway. We're not clearcutting any trees by doing the option that we're proposing here. The other thing I'd mention is, you know, the objection to the number of parking spots. We don't have to put that many parking spots there. There doesn't have to be 50 parking spots here. The idea was, we build the proposal to accommodate something that's probably more than we need because it's going to cost about the same amount of money to do 40 spots, which is what we're talking about here, than to put 20 spots there and have 20 in the front.
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, I'm honest, I'm not here to, you know, rail against the outfield parking lot because what I've been saying all along, both at the Butters meeting, at the CPC meeting, and tonight, is I just, I just think that thoughtful planning is needed here. Because I think that until a parking count's done, until a traffic study's done, until sightlines are shown from Clifton, from the curb cut on, the proposed curb cut on Beaver Dam, I just don't think anybody's armed with the information they need to say which is the best plan. And so that's really what I'm encouraging. If everybody says, "We need more parking and you can't fit it in the existing lot, so we need to put some space in the outfield," that's fine. I'm not going to be the person who stands up at town meetings stomping their feet. It's really just, I think that thoughtful planning may get you where you need to go in the existing lot. And if not, I'd just like to understand why not.
And I'll say, that's what the proposal basically includes. My understanding of the process is, you look to get a proposal approved for the money and then you do the studies that are required to decide if that's feasible and reasonable to do that, or are there other issues associated with doing that? So it is built into the proposal. We have money for engineering. We have money for contingency unless, situat Little League is not in a position, as I said, to front money for this project. We don't have the money. I'm not going to ask the board of directors to spend money upfront. We've already spent $300, which is a lot for situat Little League on the Butters meeting. I'm not going to ask the board to spend a couple of thousand dollars and money we don't have to do a project that may never take place. It's a town field. You know, there could be other actions to be taken. I mean, I look at this as, we're talking about the greater good of the community, the safety of the children, and getting people off the streets. And that's what my goal is.
Okay. So just a couple of observations and maybe a question. And we'll start with a question. Start out saying you needed 50, then you said 30 to 40. Do we really know what?
Well, this proposal.
Do we know what it is? Do we know what you need as opposed to, it seems like a pretty broad range from 30 to 50.
Well, again, my, the advice I got was, my opinion, we need at least 40 spots.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so that's all I needed, all right?
That's mine.
Okay, so where we are right now today is that, and hopefully we'll hear from everybody here, but it sounds to me like we have some parking spots, but everybody agrees we need some additional parking spots. We just, maybe people disagree on how many of those there are and where they should be. So from a conceptual point of view, which is what this is, this is an informal sort of discussion, right? You know, I think from the board, you could get the opinion from the board as to whether, well, you know, we could probably agree with that, right? Generally, you need additional parking, right? How you do it and how it gets accomplished is that next level, right? It's that next level.
I'm here. I'm here to get advice.
And it involves looking at alternatives. It doesn't involve just, you know, sort of a eureka, you know, approach, right? This is the one I thought of, so we're going to do that. It's sort of saying, what are my alternatives? And, but we expect that to be in the next level of detail, if you will.
Well, and that's what we have here. We have two options here. It's actually the second iteration of what, you know, based on the feedback I've gotten. It's the third iteration of where to locate and et cetera.
So rest assured that the planning board is thinking about having adequate planning done around this field. Even though it's a town field, it's even more important to have adequate planning around something that belongs to the town, so. But I guess what I would like to do is just, I know we've got a lot of people here, so I'd like to hear from the rest of the public, if anybody has any other comments to make.
Do you want us to come to microphone?
No, you can just stand up there. That's good. Just identify who you are.
I'm Tom Keefe, 8 Clifton Avenue, House on Apollona. I think I rented my lawn to Little League to park extra.
There you go.
I understand the need for more cars. I see it all the time. I don't see as great a need. Where we are, it's only a couple of nights that we actually have people who park on both sides of the street. And there is a danger. So there's obviously a need to move some of those people out of that neighborhood. They don't go very far down. Very rarely do they go past my house. So there's usually six or eight cars there, maybe, and then on the other side of the street. I guess my concern with the picture, if you could, if you could go to that other one with, yeah, the Hanover Mall here. There is a brook on paper, I believe, that has been there and has been a problem for people further down the hill. Some type of revernal situation. I'm not sure what it is. And it would in fact run right where those hangers are. My other big concern is the traffic flow in there. Anyone who's ever been to those games knows that when the game is over, kids fly out of there. They're everywhere. I mean, I can't imagine what would happen with all the kids running loose and cars backing out, backing out of those spaces trying to get out of Clifton Ave. It would not be a very good situation. The other problem would be, it would certainly block anybody from leaving Clifton Ave when a game was over. And if there was a double header, it'd have as many people come in. We've never called an ambulance down the street, but we've had a situation where a truck, a regular sized pickup truck couldn't get out of the street. So it is a concern for everybody on that neighborhood. And everybody that we've talked to when walking around the block is behind. That is one of their main concerns, access to our neighborhood. It's a small street. There is a need for more spaces, obviously. Maybe a combination of cleaning this one up and adding a small area on the back would be the way to go. There is a real concern on our part that we believe this is the only ballpark that's going to be able to have. I don't think the others are in a neighborhood, so we're kind of a unique situation here. But there was a lot of concern with the situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Pat Devine. My sister Maureen and I live in 8 Thomas Ave. We're just off the picture there. So we would be the next house from the Keeves. I would concur with what Tom has said. We fully recognize the need for more parking spaces. With respect to Seth, and I understand it's often a matter of perspective, from your house, Seth, I can see it's, I think you said, five to seven cars on Beaver Dam. And that looks like the overflow.
Oh, no, no. I know that you have a lot in front of you as well.
It's consistently in the summer months. It's very difficult to get in and out of our neighborhood. And the issue of emergency vehicles is a big one. So I applaud Dan and his efforts to try and move something forward.
Do you have an estimate for the number of additional spots?
I take a.
We're taking a poll.
Yeah. When they line up on the outside, so the street side of the island, along D. Allebrandi's property, along the Keeves property, and a bit onto the Moores, you're looking at a good 15 cars that are parked along Clifton. So it's challenging.
Just on, just on the street alone, 15 cars?
Yes.
And then the parking lot?
A lot of them being chock a block inside in the parking area. And if the police haven't stopped them with the sawhorses, they're down along Beaver Dam, which is what Seth of course is seeing. So it's, yeah, there's a lot there. So it's, yeah, there's a lot there. The other thing I would like to say too, one would be to just emphasize with Tom, again, Seth used the expression, you know, it would be, this one would be the least impactful. I think with respect, it would be least impactful for you. I think it would be very impactful for our neighborhood.
Yeah, no, and I just want to be clear that this design here was done before comments were given to the engineer to move the entire thing.
Yeah, shifted towards Beaver Dam.
This one, I mean, this dead space here is this big. So you're talking, look at how far away you're talking about moving it from the stream if you just shift it.
Yep, I get that.
So there's a lot of space to work with there, was my point.
It still, I'm sorry, but it still doesn't address the issue of taking the place where people sit, where kids play, where people are sitting on the stand watching the game, and putting a traffic lane right behind them. That's the big issue I have. There's a huge rock in the middle there that would have to be taken out. Sure, you could put parking lots down on that side, but you can't take that green area away because that's where the kids practice. And there's no place on the other side.
One at a time, please.
There's very little space on the other side. It's about a 15-foot space on the other side. And I'll tell you, I think it's a safety...
Excuse me, but you still have the floor.
I won't be long.
Okay.
It's a very, it's a personal thing, but it's aesthetics as regards to the welding of our neighborhood. If you've turned in the Clifton, that island of green space, there's an old stone wall there, you have old cherry trees, there's still an old maple. Just personally, our mom, who used to be part of the beautification committee, started the cleanup of that island. We now tend it, it's volunteer work, and that's what you first see when you pull into our neighborhood. And even if you, Seth, even if you shift that design, you still now have, there's a telephone pole in the middle of the island, you're basically going to lose a big chunk of the island, which means you pull into our neighborhood and it's mostly a parking lot that you see. So, yeah, obviously my bias is towards a splitting of the traffic pattern between the Clifton Ave, in and out, and something on and off Beaver Dam.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification? Just like, a couple times it's mentioned the island, so like, you pull, you can, right, currently you pull in off Clifton and you go around, there's two entrances?
Yes, there's two openings.
It's just kind of hard to see on that one. So like, where the yellow diamond is there, that's an out?
Yeah, that's the exit.
Okay.
This is the island here.
Okay.
This is the exit. Right now, it's 18 feet, about. This is certainly wide enough for a good entrance, but the traffic typically goes in and out that way. Some people actually go that way. But that's typical traffic in there. But that's the island, right in this area here.
Gotcha.
And I do have to thank the neighborhood because they cleaned it up. You know, DPW does a great job with the fields and everything, but occasionally we go down there and there's branches from the trees in there. And the neighbors clean it up for us.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just confirm with what Pat said, Barbara Keeve, A. Clifton Ave also. When you come into our neighborhood, the island is like the opening to our neighborhood. If you go in, there's only one way and one way out. And I agree that the best solution is to clean up what's there already, maybe add a few more spaces. But to clear cut up to our lot line certainly doesn't make me happy. When you could put some on the lawn, which doesn't do anything about taking down trees, and then just clean up what you have, and you could probably get at least five more spaces by taking down some brush, not taking down any trees. I think it has to be a compromise between the two places. And also, the traffic flow would be much better if you're coming out of Clifton, and then if you're coming out onto Beaver Dam, you're coming out of two different spots. It would be better. And it's true, you can see better from probably the middle of the hill than coming out of Clifton. People come up that hill, and all of a sudden, you're pulling out and they're right behind you. You didn't see, you can't see them. So I just think that would be the best solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Audrey Mullie-Edson. I do not live in this neighborhood, but I am a member of Situate Little League, and I have a child who plays a lot of baseball. So when I keep, when I thought, when I heard about this project, I was excited because this field is used for eight to 10-year-olds. So they're very young. And like we talked about, the darting, the running, they just bolt and they don't look. And when you get eight-year-olds, I mean, it's not like 15-year-olds, you know, they're a little more mindful, but when you get eight-year-olds, you also have five-year-olds that come along with the eight-year-olds. So to Dan's point, a lot of that green space that's just on the side of first base and third base, that's where the younger kids play. And that is also really part of the field. So even though it's not within the baselines, that is, to Dan's point, where the pitchers need to warm up, where all these, you know, the arm loosening happens. And you kind of need a lot of space, because again, they're eight years old, they're not the most accurate. So that space is really, that space really is part of the field, even though, again, it's not defined within the fence. So that is necessary space that kind of needs to stay there. I do agree that, I thought that the idea of splitting the traffic to two locations was a far better option. I thought it was a great idea. Just so many cars coming in and out of the one location really makes it difficult to me. I've almost been hit coming out of that street and just trying to make a right-hand turn. I wasn't doing anything fancy, but I'm trying to look for kids and look for people and who's crossing, you know, Beaver Dam to get to their car that's on the other side. So I applaud the efforts of Dan to get this project underway, and I do hope that it is strongly considered this double location of parking, you know, clean up the first lot and the second. But I don't think that that other green space around really can be infringed on upon because it is really part of the field.
Can I just ask you? The area that's over in left field that we're talking about being part of the field, I think that's what you're referring to?
Yep.
Right? It's, I don't know how many feet it is, but it's, it looks like, from this diagram, I don't know, maybe a quarter of the proposed parking area, maybe less? Is there any concern about the fact that the area where the existing batting cage is, which is where most of the kids warm up and play, it's where the young kids certainly play in that outfield area?
Well...
If you've ever seen during the games, that's where like the younger siblings always are.
Some do, but I know like the young, young ones, if I'm a parent watching a game...
You want them near the leagues.
My child was not on the other side of the...
Right. I'm just wondering, does it seem to you like that seems like a lot of space that's being taken where the kids are being, where the kids play?
Yeah, no, it actually isn't. Well, if I may, so you've got lots of kids playing sort of in this area here. You've got stands, so you've got parents along here. And then when they're warming up as well, so kids are playing sort of in this area here, you've got warming up of pitchers and whatnot in this area and just tossing the ball around. So it really isn't...
No, I'm sorry, I mean the outfield. Near the batting cage is where most...
Here?
Yeah. There's a lot of...
I see a lot of kids playing there.
It's not where most of the kids are.
Because the parents are sitting over here.
Okay, yeah, I don't, that's okay. I don't, I was just curious.
I'm just saying, I think some of the older kids perhaps, but not the very young ones.
So I need to make a comment...
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
I need to make a comment on the number of spaces.
Okay, I'm just cognizant of our, I'm just cognizant of our time. I don't want to keep the rest of us here too long.
Basically, the advice I was giving was, go and build a parking lot, put more spaces in it, okay? We don't need 40 spaces in it. If we can put 20 spaces in the front parking lot, we can put 20 in the back parking lot. I think that solves 90% of the problem, or 95% of the problem. If we can put 30 spaces back there, I think it solves the entire problem. I'm not tied to the number of spaces or the size of that thing, I'd much rather say it's smaller.
Great. So why don't, we've got all the input. Let's hear from the board.
I think it's getting late.
Yes, it is.
And I'm going, it's getting late, and I'm going to turn into a pumpkin in about five minutes. So I think that...
It's fall.
There you go.
Now it's 10 minutes.
Yeah. But at any rate, I think maybe we do need to split the difference so that reconfigure a little bit in the upper parking lot and drive over the grass for the summertime with 20 cars off of Beaver Dam and let it go at that.
I mean, I think if we put a 20...
Just, if you don't mind, let's, I'd like to hear the rest of the input from the board, okay? So thoughts on the answer?
You're next.
Okay.
I think the recommendation has to come in two parts. First is to come back up and clean up the area around the island and figure out logically what parking spaces can be put there. Not necessarily maximize it, but figure out what's going to be logically put in here, which one to be used. And I see that coming down, I wouldn't, I'm not thrilled with putting another curb cut on Beaver Dam. But I think that makes the most sense in terms of taking that parking away from what I think is a potential safety and dangerous situation that was going to be there if you tried to maximize the number of parking places there and not put it somewhere else. First part, you clean up the upper part, then you put on the bottom part. And on the bottom part, what I'd do is I'd probably come back up, design it for 40 and maybe put in 20 to start with. So that way there, I'm not coming back up and I'm clear cutting, I'm not making a big parking lot. But I'm going to give it an area where I come back and put more cars if I need it. Right, to the extent you're practicing for the championship, you may need more cars.
I would endorse that approach, and I think, just as an overarching comment, I think we're all in agreement that we need some expanded parking, right? So just how do you get there? And I think Mr. Lindbacher's identified, at least the way I would think about this as well. I do agree with you that the layout that we have at the moment for just expanding in that one area feels like it's too close to the kids and where they play and all that kind of stuff, knowing that, I had a daughter who used to pick daisies out in left field out there, you know, so. But in any event, I think there's a way to find a compromise. I do think that compromise needs a little bit of engineering and analysis, and that would be the next level that you would have to do out of your, sort of the CPC budget or whatever it is. You just need to allow for enough engineering analysis to evaluate those alternatives. But I fully agree with Bill that, you know, take a look at that existing parking lot, optimize it, and then look at what the overflow might need to be. That's kind of how I see it.
Yeah, I concur. In fact, I was going back and forth about this, but I think after hearing all the comments, like actually splitting the parking in the sense of having the two access points, or actually, I guess there'd be three access points, is better, because like I said, after the game, then you've got multiple points where people are leaving. So I think that having that compromise is good. And I like the fact that, like, you're not cutting trees, really. I should say, I think with so much that's gone on recently, the less trees, obviously, yeah, the better.
I agree. Bill, definitely right. Just maximize the existing lot, and then in the outfield, reconfigure, maybe make it shorter or make it narrower, one-row cars, whatever it takes. We definitely need something out there.
The notion of designing for a little bigger, but only building sort of a phase one that you think you might need is probably a way to think about it.
And that'll save us money, too.
Yeah, yeah. But it'll keep, I mean, you can sort of design it all at once kind of thing. I think we have consensus here from the board, so I guess that's, I guess, I don't know if we need to vote or anything, but I think, you know, we're all in favor of expanding parking. But doing it in sort of a deliberate and, you know, thoughtful way that takes some effect off...
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
With respect to the optimizing of the existing lot? I don't know if any of you have actually been over there anytime recently, but to me, when, and it's tough to tell from here, but there's a lot of area that is grass that, while much of it may be used for warmups, there's a lot of it that is not currently graded, that I think if you were to go over there and see it, looks just sort of like a lot of, there's a lot of space there. So to say, to operate within the current paved area, or the current gravelled area, or dirt area, whatever you want to call it, is not, that is not, you're going to end up with a much bigger lot in the outfield because you're not taking advantage of even some of that space. So I would encourage you to consider not just optimizing the existing area, but looking to see if that can't be expanded in some way, to take some of that overflow. Because I think that you could dramatically shrink the size of the outfield lot by taking up just some, just a little bit even.
Well, I'll leave that to the detail. I'm fine with that, but I do, I do definitely agree that the way it's laid out now, in my view, presents challenges to eight and 10-year-olds who are playing over there and who are going to run into, you know, the parking lot or whatever. So I would err on the side of caution on that side. If there's additional area that you think you could expand that wouldn't sort of impact that, I'm sure you'll be able to tell us kind of on the next iteration.
I think the design and engineering study will tell us.
Sure. Make sure that you understand where I'm coming from. I'm not sitting there saying maximize the number of cars that you can put in here. What I'm saying is to maximize the utilization of that spot, so that you've got an area where the kids can toss balls.
Right.
And then chase after them to bring them back.
Sure.
You've got an area for parking, which is delineated so that people know that they're parking, they're not parking in an area where it's a toss and throw.
Right. And if you end up with two locations, obviously, you're going to have to sort of enforce that people, when there's no spots available, that they park in the other spot, too.
We try to get them off the streets to start with, but...
Well, if you provide additional parking out in right field, then...
And that's where the money, we put money for signs...
That doesn't mean people will do that.
And things like that, in communication. But we will put signs up as well, that's money in the budget for that.
But I think I could speak for the board in that we sort of endorse the overall concept of adding, adding parking there.
There you go.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean we just need to hear from you? I think it's just the one, is there a vote that's left?
A and R, we have an A and R.
Oh, and there's a Form A.
Form A, we have a Form A?
Yeah, the Form A and the vote on the, Mr. Ken's...
Kimberly, okay.
Shall I make the motion on Kimberly Estates? I move to amend the planning board's motion of 62316 to remove repair of the drainage problem in the cul-de-sac turnaround of Kimberly Drive from the work that is currently being undertaken to complete the Kimberly Estates subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just make one comment about that, though?
Too late, we voted.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the, you know, the maturity's not given back that's been said, that's all.
I don't know legally what can be done. I know where you're coming from, but let me check with the finance director and see what she tells me.
Yeah. My sense would be that we can't hang on to it sort of in perpetuity, so that if there's a notion of we're phasing something and we're using it to do this, that there probably has to be a deadline or a cutoff or something like that.
Yeah, I had suggested that until such time as residents decide to go forward and have a street accepted, and if that's not done by a certain point in time, the board decides a year or something like that, then you'll go forward and fix the cul-de-sac as you voted last June. So I'm just suggesting that that piece is delayed until such time as the street is accepted or the residents do that. But if we don't do it or it gets denied, then that work will still get done, say, in six, nine months. My concern is keeping them together is just not getting the walkway done.
We'll do what...
We understand that. We'll do what we can. But if you take two or three years to make a decision, you can't wait that long either, probably, you know, so.
I don't mind being six months, I just...
They haven't been in any big hurry to get their surety back so far, so I have to assume we probably...
Probably don't even know they got surety.
Probably.
Okay, we'll get one more.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around. Appreciate it.
Really. Hi, this is in Form A for 196 Tilden Road. I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land at 196 Tilden Road, Situate, Mass, prepared by Horsley-Witten Group for applicant Town of Situate DPW, dated 3/9/2016, as the division of land is not a subdivision because the remainder of the lot at 196 Tilden Road has access and frontage on Tilden Road, a public way. As required by the zoning bylaw, a portion of the lot is being added to the Tilden Road As required by the zoning bylaw, a portion of the lot is being added to the Tilden Road right of way.
Delighted the second...
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we can, we should condition, excuse me, condition that with Mass Electric or National Grid, that in order to approve this, then they put all the utilities underground.
All right, sure. I'd like to make a motion...
Too late, we already voted, I know.
We have bills in minutes.
Oh, come on.
Come on, I need to pay, there's just two, just two.
Just two, all right.
Committee.
Come on, we'll go right through it.
Possibilities is a committee person, but I think we should do the bills in a minute.
Okay.
Oh, you're trained?
Yeah.
Are you trained?
No, I attended the meeting.
Oh.
So therefore, you're trained.
A lot of way to do that, yeah.
Move to pay Merrill Corporation $1,560 for engineering peer review from Merrill Engineers